I'd like to say good afternoon, good evening and welcome to the Columbus Municipal School District's Board of Trustees Meeting. Board meeting which is April 12th, 2021 and it's six o'clock. At this time, we do have a quorum present and I will offer the invocation and if you will please stand with me for the pledge afterwards. Bow our heads please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you and praise you. We're so grateful that you're here with us today, dear Lord. We come to you with open hearts. Pray that you lead and guide us in all decisions that we make. Dear Lord, guide our minds, our thoughts, our actions and our deeds. As we go through this meeting tonight, we pray that you enter into the conversations, Lord, the decisions. And please, dear Lord, I pray that you guide me. Guide me so that I will be the person that you have me to be and represent you that you'll please with my actions. This I ask in Jesus' name, amen. Attention, Luke, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the Republican Party. Individual with liberty of the interest. In an attempt not to change the agenda or anything, but I would like to say thank you so very much for offering me this opportunity to serve in this capacity for the Columbus Municipal School District. I'm very grateful for it and I do look forward to working so that our district will be one of the high performing districts in the state of Mississippi and recognized throughout this nation. You know, I was reading something this afternoon about one of our students and I'm glad I'm remembering his name. His name is DeMarcus Donison and he wrote a poem. And believe it or not, when I read that poem, it enlightened my heart. It gave me a, it inspired me to do what I'm doing right here tonight. And I'm very grateful to acknowledge one of our students down there for even thinking so intent. And I just really want to acknowledge that he really inspired me. And it's something how we can be inspired by some innocent mind, way that our children are actually thinking. With that said, uh, number three, adoption of our agenda policy BBB, policy BCBD. I need a motion please to approve.
Somebody.
The motion by Mr. Spears, second. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mrs. Young. Are there any discussion, questions? All in favor, please solidify by raising your right hand. It is approved. Next on the agenda, we have Board of Education Policy B, C, B, D. And this is consideration to approve our minutes for March 3rd, 2021 and March 11th, 2021. Now please have a motion for approval.
Someone.
The motion by Mrs. Young, we need a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake, any questions? Please solidify by raising your right hand, approval please. It is approved, thank you. Item B, trustee district review, trustee travel reports. Do we have any travel reports on any type of meetings or anything that the trustees has attended since our last meeting? Number two, discussion and consideration of capital improvement plan for CMSD. And I believe that's Mr. Little. Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Little.
Isaiah, want to see.
Good.
Good, how are you?
If, uh, do you want, you want to do this on the stage curtains or do you want to go down to the next?
Well, I have a folder here for you and we do.
Move on to that. If you would, uh, open your folders.
Yes, sir.
You have a printout that looks like this. And it's showing, uh, everything that's outlined in purple has been completed. Everything that is outlined in green is ongoing or we are working to complete that. Ones that are outlined in blue is going, we're going to do that with the S R two application. As we go through the list, I'll tell you whether tier one, tier two or three. Tier one is that one, something that we're working to complete now. Tier two is one to two years to complete. Tier three is two to five years to complete. Start on the list, uh, at the high school, the parking lot, we have that as a tier two. Plants at the front door, we have that as a tier one. The rear hall entrance is a tier one. The removal of the storage buildings and the bleachers is a tier one and I'm waiting a quote on getting those removed from the high school. The student walk from CHS to McKeller is a tier one. I'm waiting on a quote for the roof. Uh, we've got the lights all repaired through that walkway and we're presently tying the wires up that were hanging down. Parking lot lights are a tier one. Past the potholes will be a tier one. Tree, green space will be a tier three. PA system for the gym be a tier two. Gym scoreboard taken down, that was completed on four nine of twenty twenty one. Stage curtains for the high school will be a tier one. And we move to the football stadium. Uh, on the list, it states about the Dr. Parker trailer, that's a tier one, going to process and getting it moved. Signs under the bleachers, tier one, waiting on a quote on what it's going to cost to get them out. Uh, move the trash under the bleachers on your printout, there wasn't anything written, but that had been completed. Artificial turf for the sideline is a tier one, we're waiting on a quote for that. And the lights at the football stadium, stadium is a tier one. Whether we're going to repair the wiring on it or whether we're going to replace all the lights. Baseball and softball entrances, the pressure wash is also a tier one. McKeller, pressure wash the courtyard is tier one, we're waiting work to be completed on that. Um, sale, the disposal of the old mixer has been completed, we have moved it to the maintenance shop. Front beds at sale are tier one, we've got them cleaned out, but we have not painted anything in there yet. Fairview, repairing the handicap ramps are a tier one. Cleaning bench on the playground is a tier one. Uh, we had stated, uh, the pea gravel in the playground, that's a tier one, but pea gravel is not ADA compliant. Uh, so I'm looking into what we can put into these playgrounds that will be ADA compliant. Replace the flags, uh, the tier one, we're ordering the flags for all the, all the locations. Also, uh, room windows with the black stain is a tier one, going to have a company come in and take that ceiling out so we can see what's going on there. Paint the swing set, we've got that as a tier three. Concrete at the basketball, well, for the basketball court is a tier three. Stokes Beard, pressure wash all the courtyard areas, that's a tier one. Removal of the old carpet has been completed. And also the added pea gravel is tier one. Let's see what we can put into the playgrounds. Franklin, relocate the wires, tier one. Replace wood above the dock, tier one. Logo on the side of the bit, side of the building, we have that as a tier three. Painting and restoration, tier one, Jay Morgan will be doing the woodwork. Uh, they have already gone at one time and started to look kind of at what they were going to have to do this. History in archives and history and all that, so you got to put it back the way it is, so they have, uh, looked at it and they're going to go back up. I'm going to go up with them. I'm going to cut a short piece off so they will have a design and what they're going to have to order to put back up there. Centerwood doesn't look all that bad most places, it's the, the rubber coating that's inside of the gutters that is going to be one of the problems. Uh, Elsie Cook has got the painting on that, the painting will be done after the restoration. Bell tower, we've got that as a tier two. Sign and logo out front, the maintenance department has repainted the sign so far. We have one AC unit that is out, looking at the S R application for that. Paint the cafeteria wall on the outside, that's a tier three. Refinish the curves yellow at Cook, uh, once they get completed, uh, pressure washing, we will go back and paint the curves after the pressure washing is done. Finished, uh, gym windows is tier three. And auditorium sound system, we have as a tier three. CMS, repair the concrete, we have it as a tier two. Yellow car around back that was on the list, we have that as a tier one to get it out of there and see what we can do to repair it. The sprinkler system, uh, I'm going to talk to the contractors over there that's cutting the grass for us right now. He has a service like, you know, for that and I'm going to get him to go around and look and see exactly what we can find out on that, we have that as a tier two. And I just wanted to put down some projects for the upcoming years that we need to be looking at and thinking about. Is roofs at all of our locations. Uh, playgrounds at the elementary locations. Uh, new signs in front of all the schools. And we have, uh, had a guy come through and look at our, see exactly what size flags we needed and everything. He did a flagpole inspection and said that several of our flagpoles are rusted and bent. So that's something that we will probably be looking at in the future of replacing it. That's all I have.
Well, any questions from the on?
Madam President, I have, uh, one, one quick, uh, question. This morning, when Lieutenant Governor Housman was here, uh, one of the questions I posed to him is regarding a lot of different, uh, funds that have been coming into state through the Rescue Act. And he had stated that they would be putting together a kind of a capital improvement fund for districts, for roof, for other facilities. So it would be all application based instead of like the, um, A M A P E E F funds that were received currently. That was an old program that was administered back, you know, several, probably over a decade ago now that they started it, but, um, in planning for these different expenses, as you're talking about for the roofs and getting an assessment and different things and knowing that they and Jackson are looking forward to those types of, uh, offerings. So we're not depleting our funds here locally and not having enough issue bonds or raise taxes and things. My question is, are we keeping a separate list with respect to those larger scale projects that we're going to apply for funding? In those types of off?
That is, that is what the, that's the long term of what we need to be looking at. Uh, it's not on this capital improvement list that we have two to five here. But, uh, yes, it is a list of its own, it's something that we seriously need to be looking at. We are constantly patching roofs at all of our locations. Uh, so that is something that we really need to be, I think, one of the main focuses we need to have.
And with all due respect to the Board of Trustees, it's, um, very important that we, um, do things on a need basis. I understand saving local funds, but, um, as you walk into the buildings during the year, there are roof leaks throughout the district. And so the priority is that our students are in the building and we will expend the funds as needed to fix the roofs for our students.
Okay, to, to, uh, to my understanding, let me add this real quickly and Dr. Dito could probably, uh, respond to it. Uh, to my understanding, those funds will probably goes, uh, there's another set of release funds that we will be, uh, getting within the next year, sometime next year. And at this point, that's, I, that's how I understood what, uh, the lieutenant governor was speaking of this morning. Those funds that could possibly be coming next year. Whereas right now, our capital improvement is centered around immediate needs.
And as, as you recall, going, uh, last year around the same time, I did a, uh, facilities review with you all. And we discussed the roofs then and that's something that, you know, that's still an ongoing situation. We talked about fairview and we went back in and looked at the, uh, the warranty on fairview. We, you know, worked through that, but as far as all the schools in the district, some of the roofs are in bad shape and we're going to need to work on. Now you talking about that S R three money, your S R two is coming down the pipe, S R three is right behind.
Yeah.
So that is something that's, you can work with as well.
That's not S R.
Do what?
Now the funds that they're talking about, it's a form of M A E P, it's E, uh, E E F, education enhancement funds. And right now, we currently do get an allocation and it goes towards the reduction of our debt and we can also purchase buses with it. Right now, we have a pledge to our Q S C A P N A T. And what, um, Mr. Housman was saying this morning is that we're expecting a lot more of that for next year. While Mr. Little's putting together a list of things that he knows needs to happen, the funding for will more than likely come from those additional funds. Because they will, they wouldn't be able to come from S R.
Right.
And the only thing that I want to express is that, um, we waited a long time. I knew I could get an estimate from, uh, Mr. Kevin, um, of, uh, estimate we had from three years ago. And it's gone up exponentially, um, and it relates costs, but more importantly, our students are facilities that the roofs are leaking. And as a safety precaution, we need to make sure that we move on these, uh, these projects, um, in a, in a mind hole wisely and well. But we, we need to think about doing them in, you know, two or three years from now, it could cost us a lot more money. So we'll, we'll be mindful, we'll bring that information to the Board of Trustees.
And just as you mentioned, uh, fairview, I know we kind of left it hanging as to going back to the roofing company that it did, it completed the installation. And we're going to hear back about eighty percent of the roof that was actually done and we paid a hundred percent of the cost. Did that, that, I don't think we've heard back yet on that, have we? Um, so I mean, what is the standard, is it still leaking and did they, did something with their bond?
The, the roof was a hundred percent done, it wasn't eighty twenty. It, the part that was done later, uh, was the part that kind of goes from one building to the next. That part was not done, but, but was not completed, but the rest of the whole, the whole building was. And we have since had that part, uh, completed. Uh, it was leaking real bad and they said when they put the roof on, that they did not do that part of the building. It was just, it was a candidate and they put It was just, it was a candidate, and they put some glass on the sides of it and put a roof on top of it, and it didn't last that long, but we, we've since had that repaired.
Okay, can I ask something real quick here? Uh, with in-depth conversation here about, uh, the budget needs, we, uh, do plan to have, um, a board retreat. Whereas, uh, we will talk about budget items and the funding, um, exactly how we will be using rescue funds, regardless as to, uh, the specific names that may be given to them. But from my understanding, these rescue, rescue funds are, will be made available. And where the others are expended, it's a continuation of, um, services, funds that we will be maintaining over the years, over the next, I'll say forty-five years. So the best possible option for us, in my sight, is that we monitor our spending when it comes to our capital improvement. And anything that these rescue funds will fund, that's approved, then those fundings will be added into those lists. And I think what the board is really wanting to know is what, um, capital improvements will be added to each of those specific lumps of money as we obtain the funds. So they will monitor exactly what it is that we're paying for out of eleven twenty-one, out of our surplus funds. Is that what you're saying? Is that? Okay, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Bush.
I had a question, Mr. Little, I'm sorry. You, uh, mentioned that the roofs are really bad, um, I guess my question would be, in saying what you just mentioned, which, which of the roofs are in dire need, like right away?
The high school and Jill Cook are running close first and second. We've had some, we, we've worked on every one of the roofs, uh, from time to time, but those two are, are the worst ones that we have right now.
And do we have estimates on any of those, on any of the roofs?
The high school, I have nine right now, I'm waiting on, we were on the roof at Jill Cook, uh, what it ran in last Thursday or Friday when it started raining, we were up there. We have four leaks there right now, and I'm waiting on estimate from Graham Roof and what it's gonna cost to fix them. The high school, we, we, we patched several places there, but we still have, it's like we patch it, and then it rains the next time, and it's leaked somewhere else. And then you fix it, and it rains, and it leaks somewhere else. It's mainly on the, the new part where the, where the office is, the band hall, uh, the auditorium and the gym. Is where the main parts are that are leaking right now. But I've gotta call into Graham Roof and see if you can come in, uh, over there, and we ran a scanner up there, and we found where the moisture is under the roof. It's a new, uh, tool that they have, uh, where we fix those, prepare those about, I guess it was two or three months ago, somewhere in that time. It tells you exactly where the moisture is under the, on the roof. And where they fixed all that, it is, is completely dead. But like I said, it starts leaking somewhere else. So those two, high school and Jill Cook are one and two right now.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I'd like to thank you very much for the update, and I really appreciate the way that you updated, uh, the improvements that's already taking place, thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now we'll go to item two, discussion and consideration to approve capital improvement quote for Columbus High School stage curtains. And if we click on it real quick. We do have two quotes. And you do see board where Kendall Stage Curtains Company is the winner. I'll say the successful candidate. I need a motion, please, to approve the capital improvement quote for Columbus High School stage curtains.
Sorry, ma'am.
Need a second?
Sorry.
Okay, it's been first, okay, it's been motion by Mr. Spears, sorry, you all. And second was Dr. Shuag. All right, any discussion? Uh, in favor, please raise your right hand. It is approved. Item three, discussion of capital improvement, two-year period to three to five-year period. I believe that we've already had that, thank you very much, Mr. Little. Thanks. Number four, discussion of athletic park lot, parking lot, Mr. Kevin Stafford. Welcome, Mr. Stafford, how are you?
Doing well. How about y'all?
Good.
Good, thank y'all for having me this evening, it's a little bit of a Groundhog Day, I guess I'll say, y'all can't see, I'm smiling with my mask here, so. I know, uh, I know y'all probably heard this before, but I guess third time's a charm sometimes. So, uh, hopefully y'all have with you a pack of information we, we, we dropped off last week, and without warning, the death, really the first page is, is something you've seen before, but just updated in today's numbers. Uh, main reason I'm here is to, you know, get y'all's input on priorities, where you would like to head for different initiatives that we discussed in the past for paving throughout the district, mainly in the athletic complex is where we started. If y'all called late two thousand eighteen, I came to you, and at that time, the parking lot was needed to be done then, uh, and it hasn't been done since. And it really is, it's not a linear thing in deterioration, it's, it's exponential, so y'all can see the numbers there in red. And I've changed that two-year timeframe, need to get it done, to now pass due, and it, it's really, uh, deteriorated quickly with the buses that come through, so, some buses used for parking as well. And so you see the numbers there, we've always talked about it as a two-phase approach, uh, and you see, uh, how those are there, being the south end, obviously that's closest to the stadium. The north end is what's used most widely daily by the buses, that's about, are the, the most deteriorating piece. So, um, behind that is an estimate that has a ten percent contingency and plans which y'all engaged us to do. I came to you about a year ago and presented those as well, and at that time, I know we could kind of put it on hold for the time being, for cost reasons. Um, after that, though, you drop down into the yellow categories where those you have a little bit more time on, and now those used to be in your three to five-year category, now they're in the two-year category. And they're still deteriorating, if you will, and they're also in athletic complex, and they include the main road through, the baseball, uh, softball, uh, complex, parking lot area, the smaller parking lots, if you will, but they also do need some repair. And it's not a big, a big item as, as well at this point in time, and then also the high school. It's in bad shape, but now again, not in bad shape as the football's faded, so. And then after that, um, down in green are some initiatives y'all talked about, I remember last time, uh, two thousand eighteen, we actually had Hunt on the list, and we all know what happened with Hunt since I presented that to you for the first time. So I've taken that off the list, uh, it'll be handled in a different manner. But with that, um, the additional parking in the high school, if ever wanted, is on there, that's not a must-do, that's really new initiative that we had discussed, and it's in your packet as well. But then also Union, uh, I think y'all are repurposing Union, and we talked about a couple ways to tackle that, and that's also in this packet. One is using home street parking and a refer fitting into the site, which is actually a little bit more expensive, than taking a green site behind the building, where you would access Union from the back. And so there's two ways to look at that, the cost is very different. So, uh, Union A and Union B are not, uh, necessarily not to be voted, so either or, I just wanna give you cost options there. And so I've highlighted in the lighter green, the options that obviously we, we would recommend just for cost reasons, if y'all chose to pursue them, but again, neither are necessary, and it's just for discussion. So from the cover sheet, those are the items that in the past we've looked at, presented to y'all, brought the numbers more of the day-to-day, for the condition of where things are. And again, provided a bunch of backup behind it, because no one wants to listen to an engineer, especially a bunch of plans, uh, in on in, and again, y'all heard this before, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Stafford, I know that you talked about, the, with President Fox and I, about, uh, if it was engaging, um, potentially in some other projects. Can you give the board an update on that information, or is that the time?
Now, which other projects?
Uh, the, the contractor that was in town working on another project.
Oh, yeah.
Potential savings.
Okay, so, um, the city right now is doing a little over five million dollar paving throughout the city. Y'all seen, they started on Fish Creek, they'll actually be in thirty-first here, not too long from now. Uh, Walter's contracting, uh, they're out of Laurel, they'll be here from roughly June, July. And so one of the train of thoughts was that while they're here, obviously you have two local contractors that can do paving, but you have a third contractor that's already here as well, that obviously looks a little bitter from this last go-around. So, uh, if y'all would like to engage any paving at this point in time, uh, on smaller projects, the city can work within ten percent of that, so it'll be about half a million dollars if y'all wanna do something quickly through that contract. We could engage them through a change order, but the other train of thought is, we could also quickly get, for instance, the, um, the, um, height of the football field parking lot out to bid while they're still here. And to their advantage, they may want to sharpen their pencil while they're here, stay here a little bit longer, knock that out while they're here as well, which may get y'all against just a better competitive advantage when you get another contractor that, that's at the table. So, uh, it's just food for thought, uh, at the end, that would be, uh, just another advantage. They'll be gone by the end of the summer, you still, again, always have two local contractors that will always bid, and, uh, really since the last time we spoke, there's another contractor, Tupelo, uh, Mercury Paving, it's, that sometimes bids depending on their workload as well. So, uh, prices are going up, nothing's getting cheaper, y'all probably heard about construction prices in general. Luckily asphalt is the one that has held on, as I knock on wood, but, uh, because it's not, because it's not wood dependent. Uh, with that, you can't guarantee what oil prices are gonna do, that is what it's dependent on, so with that, uh, nothing, construction-wise, rarely ever gets cheaper.
But thank you very much. Uh, one, uh, it's a comment, I have, it's not a question, but it's a comment. Um, regarding the parking and the driveway for the, uh, football stadium, uh, football park or whatever. It was, I believe, December twenty eighteen, from the last quote that you gave us. And that was basically around seven hundred thousand plus, whereas now it's like a million plus. Because, uh, over the years, we did not follow through for what reasons, and at the same time, now, the parking lot is undrivable. Uh, I've been there myself, driving around, and I'm sure the other board members have also. Um, we had a track meet there, you know, our students are in and out all, all day long, every day. And if you actually drive your car through there, it's, um, it's hazardous and it's a safety matter for anyone that's driving. And you know, you have students, we have students that's driving over there. I'm not necessarily just talking about me and my car, because I wouldn't drive mine over there, for, for the reasons that I'm speaking of right now. I, I'm, um, right now, the reason why we talked to, uh, Mr. Stafford concerning the other contractors that are currently in Columbus working, is that the board, right now, we are undertaking a large capital improvement. Because of lack of maintenance over the last ten, fifteen years. The, uh, upkeep of our district that I would say should have been ongoing. And with these, uh, capital improvements that we're doing, I'm sure that we will have a maintenance plan set up to maintain, so we won't have to do so much at one time. With that being said, I know that we're getting additional funds in, and hopefully there'll be funds for infrastructure and whatever. But at the same time, I feel there's a critical need now for us to do something with, um, the football north and south entry, that driveway. Uh, I did some, hey, we say research myself and asking others, that's why I called you and talked to you about it, because I wanted to see exactly where you were with this particular, with, what your thoughts are. And with me at this time, if, if there is any way possible, if we can't afford this, and I'm gonna say that we, we can't afford it because we can, but at the same time, we may not wanna obligate that amount at this particular time. But at the same time, is there a way that we can possibly have the company to go, to come in and level the entry and the drive and the parking way? Because I'm a footballer, I'm a sports person, period, and the season is upon us. The season is upon us, we can't wait until June to even think about this. This is something that we need to look at doing, hopefully as soon as possible. So I would like for the board to just share your, your thoughts on this with me.
Um, you know, certainly since Mr. Stafford brought this to us, you know, almost three years ago now, uh, I've advocated that we do take it up and that we move forward, you know, when it's eight hundred thousand. And I know there's several other things that continue to, um, be, um, needed and, and different things, and, and certainly I understand it is a huge commitment, and that goes back to our very shrewd, um, review and understanding of ESSER funds, of rescue funds, of the, you know, s- soon to be, uh, massive, uh, infrastructure stimulus funds that haven't even been, made it through Congress yet, but will. I mean, it's just a matter of time, so it's a done deal with a few details, but, but the whole point is that, you know, ten million dollars here, twenty-one million dollars there, plus what the state comes up, their one point eight billion that David Hosman was talking about, plus the other funds that are coming through. You know, I think that unlike three years ago, when those particular pools of money did not exist and weren't even dreamt about, that we have a much more clear pathway to doing these large-scale, um, money, and not feeling like we're gonna be shorting, uh, ourselves, or, or putting ourselves in a compromised situation without a lot of the other fancy footwork that would have hadn't been done in the past to make funds available for it. So, you know, I think certainly, like you, and I think others, that we do need to make sure that this project gets done, because it should have been done three years ago. Um, but at the same time, I believe that we should measure out very clearly and concisely what it is, from a financial standpoint, could be covered in some of these other pools of money, or what we could be reimbursed just as we approved HV units, uh, HVAC units to be, uh, taken out of our eleven twenty-one. And then we find out after the fact that ESSER funds now can actually be used for that, so that money that we approved is still there in that, that fund. So how is it that we go ahead and move forward this project, and then we find, hey, I know you spent one point four million dollars or one million dollars, whatever the number ends up being, that we don't recoup through the fact that, hey, we can reimburse ourselves or get that money back on the backside through some of these other pools of money, infrastructure through the state, one point eight billion or somewhere else? So, I, I, I mean, I personally, I mean, going back to the number side of it, think that it's not unrealistic to move forward with that aspect of it, just knowing that we have to strategically understand and implement all possible efforts in those other funds.
Yes.
Without just spending money to spend money.
My sentiment is exactly.
And respectfully, uh, you know, Dr. Dito has twenty-eight years' experience, I think Mr. Robert has fifteen and, I mean, we will use our, our federal funds wisely as we work to mitigate the parking loss and other. These, um, federal funds are very specific on what you can spend them on, you know, information to get into us, and we work deals, and we talk about it sensibly, reviewing it, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you very much, Mr. Trustee.
Michelle, you have any comments?
I, I was just gonna say that, um, that would be a dire need, um, our students are in and out over there all, every day practicing, we have parents picking up students, and, um, it is definitely at the point where it's just not safe. And we definitely don't want to get into someone having an accident or driving in one of those holes. Um, it seemed to me if, if it got, it got worse after the, um, the, the storm, the, the ice storm.
Yeah.
So, um, it's, it's detrimental for our students and for our staff that's driving over there every day, having to park their vehicles, buses in and out. And, um, we, we, um, we have that obligation, not only ethically but morally also, so I think we do, we definitely need to move forward.
Probably more of a decision-making.
Well, I don't think anybody doubts it's a decision, a moral decision, that's not the issue, I think the issue is how they pay for it.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and with, I mean, with the team we've got in place, we should be able to figure out what Um and with, I mean, with the team we've got in place, we should be able to figure out what, where we can pull from different pots of money. And that becomes a question of timing, is when we get the money. And what I don't know, uh and maybe Dr. Labatt or Ms. Roger can help me. If we, because I'm not clear on this, if we spend the money upfront, can we get reimbursed?
And please understand, I wasn't saying that we weren't making more obligation. I was just saying to our students.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it was not, no, not at anyone up here, that was just, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Yeah, I think we all understand that this has to be done. I just want to make sure that we're not shorting ourselves and it doesn't sound, sound like we are.
Okay, so right now, board, will we, since we are all in agreement, and are we looking at using the contractor that's in Columbus currently to come in and pay, correct the potholes and all of this going on? Or are we looking, ma'am?
No, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I was just gonna say, I think we'd still have to put out a bid, and it wouldn't be something we could just bring them in.
Not at all.
I'm not.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, but my, uh that's what I was going to say, is that if we are in that mindset, that we would ask Mr. Stafford to bring the bid in to the uh district so that we'll know. Uh Dr. Labatt?
Yeah, he discussed that extensively with President Cox. He could look at some numbers and come back to the board and now give the board some time to look at where we are physically. And we could give some um detailed numbers of what uh expenditures are coming out of Esra funds. Um and so that we'll know what will be our, our local funds as far as what we're paying for. So that's what we discussed extensively between us and that we can bring back to the board. So the board will have some um exact numbers of what we pulled out of Esra, um based on estimates. And then he can engage and get an estimate on, on the cost and so give us some time to work out some details.
And at that particular time, we'll make the decision as to whether we're gonna use the contractor that's in to do a, a cleanup or go straight into uh his recommendation to do the complete project, the one point four, Mr. Spears.
I just wanted to ask, do we need to approve for a bid like we do on other things to go out and seek bids? Or is it something that we, we don't have to, to do it?
Mr. Don?
You certainly can approve to advertise for bids. What does the superintendent?
Okay, I was, uh in, in my understanding, I have to give Kevin an opportunity to do legwork. And I know that board trustees are going to um soon be a retreat. So um as he engages, brings the information, we'll get that to you, and we can make a more informed decision and go forward. Kevin, do you?
Yeah, I would say y'all have already approved us to engage to go all the way through the final plans to go to bid for that matter. Uh we just paused where we were. So all y'all have to do is tell us to go back to work. Uh the estimates you have now is a fiscal run that, and so there's not any real legwork. We have to do left besides put it out to bid. And so if y'all are wanting to do the entire package, you can't add that kind of money to a existing package. So you have to get your own uh advertising bids. And so you can still do that while this company's here, we can still wrap it up. It would probably be about a three-month process for us to go out, get the bids, bring them back in and have that for your consideration. I don't know if that's enough time for y'all to look at your financial situation.
Well, and that would, I know they're getting ready to retreat, I should have gone with the numbers specifically, um all the people more before they make a decision. Move forward, I'd sub to them before.
I can only speak for myself, you know, I'm one vote. You know, whereas I, I've uh, I've basically uh looked into this, and I have a general understanding as to how the uh funding works uh when the State Department gives federal funds, I understand the process of that. And it would probably be at all of our best interest if you were to consider, as Dr. Labatt requested, to just bring the package back to us from the contractor that's currently doing it. And let's see where we are now with our obligations that we already are taking upon.
Big like.
And I'm thinking that this um, with this said, that the pavement or whatever, we'll have this done uh before the company leaves, before June. Because right now is Mar- is April, excuse me, and May is, is coming upon us quickly. Before you know it, June will be here, July through the summer months. And uh it'll be still looking the same way that it has been. See, when you gave us the quote three years ago, it was looking like that then. We see the state of it today that's even worse. But before you even gave us that quote, I'm reminded of how it was before then. So the longer we hold out on making any type of decisions or coming to any agreements to move forward with this, let's keep in mind that where our children go to school is representing us, but it's representing them. And when they have other students coming to play baseball, all these games that's going on now from Starksville School District, New Hope, West Point, all of these other school districts, here we are, we have to bite the bullet and come to an agreement on how we're gonna move forward, as we always say, in taking care of our, in maintaining our district. Because if we continue to wait, what's gonna happen is it's gonna get worse and worse. And I'm sure, if not all of you, a lot of us have visited districts that are in this tight condition now all over Mississippi, throughout the state. So at this time, uh I'd like to thank you very much for coming. I appreciate uh you working with us through this, and uh we look forward to a meeting with you again.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stafford. Uh item five, discussion of Hunt Campus Recovery. Review of expenditures, reimbursements, payments for projects, Mr. Taylor.
Good, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
So things, things are, are moving finally. We have a, the project will be on the street to, to advertise. Actually, I advertise this for bid May the fourth. It's uh three weeks from tomorrow. We're scheduled to receive bids on June the third, it's a Thursday. We have a, a settlement conference with uh Mr. Winfield's attorney, who's handling the federal litigation. We have a settlement conference with the insurance company that next Tuesday, which is June the eighth in Oxford. I'm getting the federal courthouse in Oxford. So at that point, we'll have actual numbers and calls at that settlement conference, hopefully to work on insurance company to see as far as the uh, as far as the insurance company paying, paying for the repairs of the school. So that's, that's the good news. And then things go well there, then we'll be back here at the board meeting, I guess, in the second Monday uh of June, which is uh June fourteenth, I think.
June fourteen.
Fourteenth. So be here fourteenth, hopefully to, toward the bid and start construction. So that, that's where we stand as far as advertising, bidding, and get back to the board, so we'll have real numbers there. Um we also, we're still working with FEMA. FEMA's been uh frustrating, i- it's, it's putting mildly. We, we submitted for some mitig- mitigation uh of upgrades uh back in uh July and August. It's been eight months. We got a phone call this afternoon with Dr. Dito. Uh very uh tense phone call, uh letting know that we, we waited eight months. We need, need something, uh trying to get another conference call this, this uh, this week and get the FEMA resolved. Uh mainly for FEMA's replacing all the windows, either windows that were damaged by the tornado. It would be huge to get those windows replaced uh, uh for that. Uh and then once we, when we print the drawings and for, for that retirement, we'll also send the drawings to Archaic History if they review. We've worked, we've been working with them the whole, whole time and not seen issues with Archaic History, but we'll send them to that too. Um I think so, we, we're, we're just, we're just wrapping things up now. Nothing really changed this part. We had some exterior perspectives last time. Renderings, we had a floor plan, nothing changed since that time there. We're still working with the community, the community college, uh getting the details of kitchen and kitchen equipment and things like that, but everything's going well.
So by June fourteenth, you'll be able to come to us and with more specifics?
June fourteenth, we should have, we should have the bids in hand. We should have, as far as the, 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 the settlement conference, we will present. I'm not sure the settlement conference would exactly, i- is scheduled for two hours settlement. I'll just come back to two hours, we'll present, you know. We will also, when we print the doc, we print the final documents on May the third, May fourth, we'll also send the insurance company the copy. So the insurance company will have our final drawings. And then when we take bids, it costs what it costs, you know, the policy is replacement policy. Um so it costs what it costs, you know, to that point there, just mainly agreeing to the scope. Uh anything we felt that was not in the scope insurance, we've done as an offer, and so hopefully there's no argument about it. We try to be very careful, trying to get everything adjusted. Oh, they then again need very big, also being fair with the, you know, policy, insurance policy. So we'll be back the fourteenth uh with numbers, I get some indication, hopefully, of the insurance company's position. Uh hopefully, hopefully, uh I mean, hopefully be able to move on to contract and move forward on, on the construction. That, that's our goal, is hopefully the board can be able to do that.
Board members, you have any questions?
And I will give you an update in my superintendent's presentation with the MOVs on the other side, the district side for the facility.
So hopefully by, by the fourteenth, we'll have bids in hand, we'll have, hopefully some indication on the insurance settlement process there. We'll have FEMA's, we should have FEMA's uh stands on hazard mitigation items, and we should have Archaic District approval. So we'll have all that from the fourteenth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I say Mr. Taylor. Item number six, contract renewal updates. Would we have any questions or comments regarding contractual updates, contract renewal updates?
Uh yeah, just um, maybe it's just a formatting thing or a, a request I have. Uh this now says contract list in excess of uh ten thousand dollars. Would it be possible to do what the upper limit is? I mean, how, how high do these go? There are no numbers attached. Does that make sense? I mean, it's, you know, the, the, the floor is ten, what's the ceiling? I mean, just, just so I have an idea up at the top, in excess of, you know, between ten and fifty or whatever it is. I'm just cur- just curious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Item seven, discussion of Columbus Municipal School District website. Uh this is a uh project that uh I uh mentioned, and uh one of the board members also mentioned it to me. And uh what this is, is we're, 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 we are requesting for the uh Mississippi School Board Association to um develop a website for us. This is um one of the new services that they have. And what they'll do is complete, uh it'll be built in, it'll be totally updated with a calendar, schedules, courses. It will meet ADA compliant. And once it is completed, our um technology department will keep it maintained and upgoing. But right now, it appears that um Mr. Lawton has a lot on his slate with the uh staff that he has in place right now. And as a project, while we're building up our district's, district in appearance, we also want our website to be easily uh readable for anyone that may move into the district or may even just go on our district website for information. A lot of uh educators compare informations from web, from one website to the other. Um would you have any comments about this? Do you all, Dr. Smith?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. But we would have to, I mean, they're not doing this for free, so that has to, that'll come up later on.
Dr. Labatt?
To the board, thank you for considering something that we need to do. I've heard you all discuss it before, um I'm gonna work with, with Mr. Lawton before we engage at MSBA to understand just if he'll be, to be part of the call of information and reporting back to the uh, to the board trustees. We wanna get estimate out, but I wanna see where we are, 'cause he has done some legwork. And uh we will work with him sensibly and get a report, um hopefully by the retreat or the next, next working.
Okay, by the retreat?
Retreat or next working, I think.
Next, we have consideration and discussion to approve board of trustees to attend Mississippi School Board Association of School Law Webinar on May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Board, I need a motion to approve. So it's been motioned by Mrs. Young, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is approved. Next, we have consideration and a discussion to approve trustees to attend Mississippi School Bu- Boards Virtual Legislative Update and School Law Review on April twenty-sixth through the twenty-seventh. Uh board, I need a motion to approve. I need a second. Second. Motion by Mrs. Young, need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears.
One, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um I may be able to attend this particular one, but I just want to make sure that if the board approves it and I find out like after this meeting tonight, that I can also, they would count us in the additional trustee, not just as it's listed here for approval, or if we need to.
How we need to rework, do we need to rework the motion? Pardon?
I mean, Mr. Mr. Dylan said, but there's trustees, uh even in this specific, I thought it was just.
I was just looking at what's, what's filled out on them.
Oh, I think several trustees that maybe already filled it out, but it was sent to all members from Mississippi.
So right now, Mr. Spears, you may be, you may have an opportunity to attend the one on April twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, yeah.
Well, since.
Making sure that it was just for the one approval list, that if it's all, then I could let Miss Velma know maybe tomorrow after I have, make sure that some of the things.
Now, that's what I think you should do, because it is something she'll have to invoice for.
And Miss, Miss Witter, so she could trustees of all activities.
Okay, okay.
She could sit there and mind it, everybody would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Motion is second.
It has been seconded by Mr. Spears. The discussion is taking place. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is approved. Now we have goal updates. Uh student attendance report, are there any questions, concerns about student attended report? Student safety report. Student discipline reports.
Dr. Schumacher, um, I think I asked this before, and I believe it's a computer thing. Um, for the middle school, we're still getting two assaults, one in December and one in August.
Uh, I think that that was a correction because of the date of the hearing. So we're working to mitigate that situation, so my apologies for that.
Okay, yeah, I just, we got, thank you.
Any more discussion on the student discipline reports? Dropout report? Any comments, board, from the dropout report? Student dropout report? The safety report? Number five, COVID nineteen update. Doctor Labatt, I know you sent us something weekly.
Yes, ma'am, we, uh, most of the current members did have a meeting with MSBA, Dr. Dobbs, about some preliminary, um, in-school testing, in which I said that we would like to participate in, um, some rapid testing. We will be getting some more extensive information this week about participating in that program, and I'll make sure that I give the board all the information. But, um, it is planning for unforeseen, um, and being precautious about what may, um, as it relates to opening our doors full-time in August and making sure that we have all, um, safety mitigation we need to keep our employees and students safe. So right now, we continue to support the vaccination process, and we will continue to keep you updated with more information on the report.
Thank you, Doctor Labatt. Uh, next on the agenda, we have superintendent updates and reports. Superintendent Presentation, Doctor Sheri Labatt. Welcome, Doctor Labatt.
You all think I'm the boss, huh? So, uh, we'll start, and I have the right. All right, we started our school district goal, which was done in the suffeden planning meeting, um, in two thousand and eighteen. Um, and retreat, uh, goal one, two, three, four, five, which is also on our website. Um, and so we'll start from there. Uh, these are some of our, what I did from our successful school district initiative. I would also say that some of these initiatives have had some type of pause or some kind of change due to the pandemic. And that we shifted to a hybrid session, so, um, one is coding pre-K five, you know, we're doing most of that, um, virtually, you know, uh, with our students. Secondary college, period coding, cybersecurity, that is a collaboration with East Mississippi Community College, and it's been very successful. Intervention work for NTSS, we do have interventions at every school, we're working diligently to, uh, improve our student steps through the NTSS process. District-wide reporter, heater monitors, that was part of the initial plan for, um, selecting a superintendent and mitigating some strong behavior issues we have, um, prior to becoming superintendent. Uh, I think one of the best investments we've had in the district is the behavior interventionist. Uh, I am working with, uh, Mrs. Chapman, uh, with the, with the behavior specialists in Nashville Public Schools, who has an intensive district plan, um, and we're also working diligently to prepare for August. Uh, our academic coaches have been in great support. Uh, we continue to get weekly data analysis, all of our schools get other updates, information about current usage with IRA and other more data as assessments are taken. I know that Doctor Schumay and Mr. Spears and other trustees want some more information about academic achievement. Miss Murray will detail that more in, uh, in her presentation. But we wanna make sure we capture data that's significant and shows exactly where our students are from the assessments that we're getting or the diagnostic assessments that we're getting. Um, oops, sorry. How do I go reverse? You got it? District-wide PBIS, did some extensive training this year with PBIS, um, and I've seen some great things, even though we're in a, a different situation. I am seeing PBIS done well up the Rockland District, thanks to our controlling teachers and great leaders at the, uh, school level. Middle school ACT preparation is something that, um, has been a little stagnant, a little work difficulty to make sure that we keep it force. Looking at, um, purchasing some more materials to support that initiative in order to provide ACT score at the high school level, like starting at active middle school level. District-wide literacy initiative, most of our students have a library of books. We continue that initiative by being more focused on early literacy. We're doing several initiatives that we're going to be working with, I know Doctor Schumay and Mr. Spears, and Excel by Five doing some collaborations that I'll talk about a little bit later. And district PLCs and professional development, we've worked diligently to make sure that we continue to, um, professionally train, um, teachers. In progress, uh, some things that we've worked on in TSSS, there's some things that we wanna finalize and make significant, um, start implementation at specific levels. Secondary level has always been a complex place and put NTSS, our high school, middle school, so it's difficult because of scheduling. We are working to make sure that those are done well. Um, ACT work, CEPs and ASAP, in collaboration of our goals of making our students' college career and mission prepared. We need to support those initiatives to our high school students. Dropout prevention plan, we have a team of great leadership in the district that worked diligently for our high school dropout prevention plan is, um, a very important part of our process of eliminating, uh, our students that drop out. It has been approved by MBE, and it is a working document. Um, teacher pipeline, MBEW, so excited about this collaboration with W. We're working diligently with, uh, Low, Dr. Hatton, the team, we're here to work on create our own teacher pipeline. Um, I know that during the review meeting, I think trustee, uh, Schumay brought up some issues with teacher turnover. Uh, it's really a dynamic problem, there are more, there are, it's a teacher's market, you know, five, ten years ago. If I saw a teacher that went between South Bend and Columbus, I would say, when I looked at the application, this teacher is too transient, right? You know, I would want a more stable teacher, but right now it's a teacher's market. There are more jobs than there are teachers, and it's been like that for the last six years. So we will continue to have those issues, um, until we can work on things that like happened today to talk about getting us to the top leaf average with teacher pay, and continuing to make sure that we can provide our teachers with the money that they deserve to teach our students. So, um, it's not just a problem here, it's all over the state, and we'll be, we'll diligently. And very proud of personal department, college department, getting contracts out of time to our teachers. We know exactly what we need, where we're getting improvement processes this week, of getting, um, the teachers in, in the classrooms. Um, uh, hungry development, I have a slide for that, I'll go about that in a little more detail. Intensive early literacy focus and training, we leave students, um, for our third grade, we realize that we have a intensive focus on that and work diligently, I'll talk more about that later. Uh, we, we are a part of MBE, we're, we're for literacy integration. We feel that it's an important act of the third grade gate, uh, through the integrations that are done across the curriculum, and we're working with MBE, they have been a great source of support in helping us with early literacy, the undertow of our program. So we're excited about that. We have reviewed high-quality instructional material analysis, it's very real, that in more detail. So excited, I can't wait for great reading, we'll be working with local stakeholders, Excel by Five, with, um, creating a process of, this is a letter today that was on my to-do list, and now I haven't ended a chain with getting some more facts from her before we submit that letter, that is at the University of Mississippi, and we will have, um, some meetings moving forward to really focus on it being a collective effort. It's an important part for the district to understand that literacy is a community initiative, it's parents, it's community, it's a city, it's all of us working together to improve the literacy and prepare our students before they come back, uh, come into the school environment. Uh, we're gonna work with a, 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 a engine that, that's all they do, and so we're excited about that initiative. Um, and I would be more appreciative, but, uh, literacy integration, technology instruction, professional development, UCLA is very important that we have complex text and text-related question regularly available. We have, uh, a lot of principals to select several, uh, resources that we're gonna provide that to our students. Um, this year, it will have more intensive complex text and text-related question resources next year, right, Mr. Murray? Correct. Um, operation graduation, we continue to work on our, um, our graduation rate, immediate accountability. I know Doctor Schumay and Miss Cox were in a meeting, listening on Friday. Um, I was on my phone in the dead zone, when I left the day, I apologize for that. But yes, we have information on that, and it's an important initiative to tell our stories about, tell our story about what's happening in our district that's positive, that's not within the accountability models, and we're excited about that initiative. Uh, we talked about Mac and V, books, last, uh, meeting, Falcon Academy, Professor Dunn, nervous alignment between grade levels at each school, and then, um, Quest Archipelago, which is more in will detail, more in work. All right, uh, there was an extensive questions about learning loss mitigation during the meeting. I wanted to detail a lot of things, some of these are very similar from what we have in progress, because number one thing we have to do and deal with learning loss is improve instruction, provide quality professional development, work on literacy, correct, and giving our students an acceleration, and have an accelerated mindset, which is strong grade level instruction, right? And using the brain, and understanding the way the brain works and how we can accelerate and mitigate some of the use of learning that's been lost from our students. Uh, so same kind of thing, and break-up reading, that's gonna sit, um, hopefully our students, that's something the district has known for the last couple of years, which means our students have books in their home, there's to write their literacy consistently, and so we continue to work on that. We will have some community meetings that will be led by teachers to work on getting our parents the skills they need to understand and to advocate for their child's learning. We will have a thick record of literacy next month for our parent meeting, we'll have a fifth grade student and their parents to discuss, what do I need to do to advocate for our child? We realize that is a, our biggest weapon in, um, improving our school district, is that our parents understand what the district should do. They should understand that we should provide quality facilities for their students to attend school. They should understand grade level standards and expectations that relates to academic achievement. And we're gonna make sure they have all the information they need so they can demand excellence from us as a school district. Uh, acceleration, building teacher leadership capacity, district leaders, uh, literacy initiative, year-long tutoring. We have a, we've put a tremendous amount of funds as we roll through our Esther, um, kind of projects, um, into year-long tutoring, being very out-of-the-box thinking, getting, getting students at the W, people that are at the School of Education, recruiting those people to assist us in doing some of that too. So we're being very, very creative with our, our, uh, our funding to make sure that we are able to provide a year-long tutoring. Um, literacy integration, high-quality instructional material, focus on regular text and text-related question, development of teacher leaders, a broad, strong initiative, then this Murray will talk about, and we're, we're, we're there. These are things that are leader-focused, um, providing instruction feedback, quality feedback, honest feedback, positive feedback to our teacher in order to improve instruction. The number one thing we can do is put our, our students in front of a quality teacher. And we have to put our focus on, they, they attended these great, um, higher education institutions in the state. We wanna make sure we give the best out of them by giving them quality feedback, reflection, and improvement. Uh, and a lot of times when we were doing that instruction feedback, and we talk about it in our weekly PLCs, it's just allowing them to find solutions to their own problems, uh, them understanding, uh, of, of rigor relevance in relationships. Uh, we talk about the effect size of having high expectations of students and them to the classroom. So these are the things we talk about weekly from leadership standpoint with, uh, principals, and also the management team. Um, you know, we, we have a philosophy in district, no dead ends, right? Right, we go to create a way to make sure that they're successful, and that, uh, thing is carried out throughout the district. Um, we talked a little bit, uh, last week about, uh, early literacy training with letters and other training. We gotta talk about extensive last week, exploratory experimental learning, um, and thinking. Um, that's just a part of just, uh, adding, um, you know, several types of, uh, brain interactions as we teach, um, and making sure that we're doing that development process very early on. We've seen a great, great uptick in our science program, thanks to our good, our department, uh, Kelly White and our outstanding principals. We know that we're getting, um, a lot of literacy, we know we're getting a lot of focus through experiment and learning from that process. We plan to do some more, um, with, uh, informational texts, with history courses, and make sure that we're having more experimental work and exploratory learning in the classroom. Um, we've not talked about regular, uh, student relationship, high expectation, stronger assignments and instruction. We've talked about quality updating work and instruction, as we continue, uh, to focus on those, uh, uh, signs being given to students. Uh, we also talk about non-parental mentoring support. We've brought six, several organizations in, we've met with them, with Dr. Dean and our principals to really detail how important it is for people to have, for our students to have non-parental support. We will be working with the airports and other entities, if you want to volunteer to develop, mentor one of our students, feel free to do so. They love it, and as you can see, that they're very exceptional in their writing skills, their, their basketball skills, and their, uh, football skills. They are exceptional students, so we're excited about that. So if you're interested or have an organization that's interested in mentoring and going into our school where our students are, we would very much appreciate it, just call the office. Uh, summer school, um, Miss Murray's gonna break out, I'm just gonna detail that, I know trustees have some questions about that. Uh, and Professor Dunn at Work for, for literacy, so some of the stuff we're doing. All right, hiring virtual students, since I remember, our current numbers, as of dated.
Could you go back to that real quick, please?
We got crotch. Getting up funding.
The numbers.
Oh, right. And I'm sorry, I, uh, I can see you all too.
All right, thank you.
And this is our college extension, MBE has done a great job, um, since I've been a federal organizer. They send us an email telling us how much we've expended, so we know exactly where they are, and I know we did, 'cause I know they get it, and I forward it to me. Right? Like, just in case they haven't gotten it, though, we are a federal extension, so that's where we are. We get specific emails, and they do it two, I think, two times, we're gonna be in each application, right? So very good, I can have that. All right, here's our N H P form, number five. And I explained that last week that our five fifty is from our transportation department, and that number will probably be used to record. I also wanted to say, uh, to be prepared, the Glenn's audit will be, uh, um, given to us, the public tomorrow, I think. Um, and, um, they did an extensive job of reviewing our data, uh, to be able to look at our fiscal, um, performance in a very visual way, comparative way of other districts, and also allow us to look at our focus and things that we were doing well, what we can do better and differently. So if you see it in the papers, not because it's just, yeah, I had to wait on them, they were at our A C to get that information, so. And any questions about that? And all of this information is detailed in your report from Miss Rogers.
Uh, say, say that, um, last part one more time, um, the audit.
Oh, the, the other one, the one we did from Lance, the state auditor.
Right, that's, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Like, so that'll be clearing the ledger front page tomorrow.
And I don't know if it's gonna be front page, I'll obviously read it, so if you get it, maybe send it to me, I'll be working with it. I don't know if it's gonna be front, center, I don't know. They just asked me for a quote, so I just assumed it's gonna happen. And so that four, four thirty, five o'clock is the right part of your chart. Any question about that? If you get the papers, send it to me, I'll, maybe this week, next week. So is that current accountability rating? Student attendance, is all of this in your report? It's all, everything to you, I'll just repeat. Uh, this is something we do every summer, I want to give you all kind of, uh, information about what we do every summer. Every summer, we have a legal update, I either have GMP, or I'll have those things to be, and then talk about special education issues and district, district, um, principals, and we talk about, uh, just legal things, so that they're up about what is moral ethical leadership, what are things that are happening, what are things related to COVID nineteen, what is special education law, and that, and so we make sure that we do all that information. And we always learn something that is correct and is right, so we do, we do that. Uh, we also talk about this year, Doctor D has added safety training, since we'll be going into, um, August with the COVID nineteen, so we just work diligently, get, get somebody to come here to really talk about how we can make sure that our safety is well-honed and wisely, uh, as return school, um, return school. We talk, um, intentionally about goal setting, but that the contingent on when, uh, math data comes in, we will talk about social, emotional, goals, goals, personal, professional, the things we need to do. Uh, and we always bring Bonnie Gray, that has been here to tell us how we can go to jail if we make mistakes, because she is a great teacher, and she will come again this year to go over some things related to funding and federal departments and things that we're supposed to be doing at the building level, we can do at the district level. We are constantly getting trained on fiscal metrics at the district level, because our bill is important for all of us to understand it , um, in a very, very detailed way, so. So we always have great training. We'll have some, we'll have some India or they'll be, um, talking about accident medical and continue to focus on SEO.
Can I ask a quick question on, on the fiscal? Um, because I remember Ms. Granger came in, uh, right after, uh, you took over to kind of look through everything. So we're still using the excellence group on our fiscal, um, budget comp. Because I know last year we asked, I said, we, the board had asked about reports when I know we didn't have a permanent CFO and we were working through things. And, um, I think she made time for the board, maybe like one call in for twenty minutes. And so now she's just doing a, she's just doing education for Ms. Holly Rogers and, and the business office.
No, she's not being paid for anybody. This is something I, that happened to me in basic, we was, we just call her in as an expert in fiscal management in the state. And she does one day professional development with RTD and the principals. So she's not on, on, you know, we're not retaining her as a consultant. She's just coming, she's coming to do a one day professional development. We've done that since we've been.
But she's not constructing our budget this year. She did last year.
She just comes and talks about updates. There's a lot of changes that have happened with COVID nineteen. And so our, our, our principals are aware of things like fix accidents, going over that, you know, they gotta have to keep hearing it over and over again, the importance. How important it is to do federal funds, how big ethic funds. And so she just does a great job keeping us updated, current issues happening, it's like eating. Or, um, we sometimes get Mr. Chief to come in, he's not visiting, um, to come in and just sell the legal updates on things we need to know as educators.
So these are basic, uh, PD during the summer months?
Yes, yes, yes. And we try to do it within the first week that June second is already on our calendar. So, uh, please work on safety. We added that element. And we sometimes give them half days or full days and we just have professional development question to answer. And I feel that the team always learns a lot. I know that was great for Mr. Law coming in last summer. We kind of threw him in and he learned a lot of the fiscal training early on for our new directors that are coming in. So it's been important. Ms. Rogers, do you have anything about those two professional legal? Not really. I just go to the board with confidence that we'll be able to work the budget without money.
I have confidence in you.
Um, our structure of literacy, we're, we're really focused on reading, um, books, um, essentially we're going to do them above age level. Murray will talk about that. We are working on reading liaison at each, uh, at the district level. On the roof and the title application because we don't pay our needs both in the community and in the school environment, using our, our, um, federal dollars as well. Um, we're going to work on two different flexible program and just continue to have parents support. I really feel like we had an excellent first meeting to talk about law, um, and our, of our child. And I think the next, the next two months will be literacy focused as we go into the summer. And I really want to encourage our students to read.
Uh, do a question real quick.
Sure.
So I'm, uh, she, Ms. Murray will probably discuss that about reading from, from the last slide. Is that part of her?
Yes, she'll talk about it more. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anything, is there a specific question you have with literacy? Is, do you have a question?
No, not right now. I just, I want to, I want to hear it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, our preliminary MOUs from, uh, Eastern City Community House, N E W, has been reviewed by, um, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Hentfield. Um, and if they are preliminary serieses, we will give those back to them and make sure that we are where we need to be. And I also let Mr. Taylor look them over to make sure they're compliant. And I also feel preliminary draft to you all for review, but they're within the standards of our expectation of what we agreed upon in our, um, initial meeting for the review. Uh, we are doing a personnel analysis. I asked for that on Saturday night, probably about nine thirty, right? And so we're going to look at personnel analysis from the middle school in transfer, uh, to reconfiguring those six graduate students. Um, NDE configuration process is extensive, is very extensive and it's the reason why my Dr. D and I met with Mr. Taylor. Uh, when that's going to be turned around soon, um, that is going to be a lot of work. We have to work with every agency at NDE and I will be bringing, um, NDE, um, the reconfiguration of moving the six graduate students. So you have to do it almost a year ahead, ahead of time in the next two months. We're also going to talk, talk a little bit about the service officer that's at the MOU and I'll send those draft CDs and give you review it. Um, Mr. Dunn and Mr. Hentfield, look at some marketing. Um, it was very encouraged by me today about some of the workforce development training that's been happening in that area. It's been a great thing. So the city is doing it. As far as the roads out there and some of the revitalization projects that we're going to work through to make sure that that is looking to make up at a great place where community members and our students can come and lives can change. So we're excited about that. All right, uh, this is our pre-K program. We are establishing most of more workshops. Um, and we're going to have separate pre-K parent meetings. Um, and then we're going to continue to be able to resource the information and distribute it. And so even at our meeting, it was about law and child, so we'll continue to get to our parent. We are very, very, very focused on giving our parents preparation so they can advocate for their children. So as the intense focus, we'll continue to do so and invite you to those meetings. That, and actually that date for, uh, NDE leadership directors, all of them get set. We got our student guest this week and we got our parent who will be our guest on the stage for next month. And got that finalized from one of our great principals today. So that's our construction building. Uh, just wanted to let you know what acceleration is about. I know you'll hear that term quite frequently. But as this intense grade level standards being taught, even when a student has a definite deficit and scapping backwards. Um, our, our curriculum does build upon each other. It starts back, we've got ELA. And so we create that mindset. I know you've heard a lot about remediation, but, uh, remediation has to happen continuously with acceleration. Because students cannot, um, to, continue to fall behind. And we've done, uh, research and the central research extensively, both at the school level and the district level. All right, this is transportation. Uh, I'm sure there's going to be an extensive report, um, after I'm finished, but this is just some numbers and things that he's talking about. And I'll let him, um, talk about that in, because I think he would know that. This is parent meeting. Like I said, we'll be talking with one of the airport's base and continue to have our, uh, our, our parent meetings in person. We're going to offer both options. Um, I think that that's a fair way to make sure that parents are reached and have opportunity to come, both virtually and in person. So I think we'll get more comfortable as we have access.
Is there any way possible, um, the board, oh, I can or one or two of us can attend parent meetings in person?
Person or, yeah, everybody's amazing. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. If this, you know, if you just notify us of the times and dates.
Yeah.
And so our schedules.
Sure, sure.
I would be interested in participating.
Okay, perfect, time, time. Perfect, perfect. And this is the, uh, the budget table that Ms. Rogers detailed to you on the student sheet looks forward to answering all the questions that we have to retrieve. And we work in a detailed manner to, um, move forward with the budget process. And you also have that via email. And this is technology update. This is when it gets out. But, uh, but, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Walton has done a great job of his own appearance. Um, he, he worked there at spring break. Um, it was annoying because we, we, a lot that happened has, had, had, had a lot of nights at weekends that take care of. We feel that's going to be a game theater of how we have immersed our technology, our money, money initiatives. We're very, very happy about that. And to be able to provide that type of extension service to our students. Um, and excited about, uh, what we've done with our resources and the technology in Columbus, this is school district. And thank you again to Mr. Walton and his partners. And then, oh, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Uh, I have one, uh, question or, or comment. Thank you very much for a thorough update and review of everything here in the district. Uh, you did select to do these, uh, reports to us on a monthly basis?
Correct.
Okay, so tonight was a thorough review. So from now on, we will get just the basic review. Is that it?
No, well, I, you know, some of the things that I said last month were kind of redundant. You know, so it's going to be some of the same information that you get with your weekly report. If there's any, any outliers, but I think the more that I continue to talk about it monthly, the more I'm also educating you all about what we're doing. So if there's fewer questions, so these monthly are, they're, they're pretty easy to do. And so I don't mind doing it. Um, the organization has it better. So thank you to the trustees. I know I've been embalmed with a lot of things, but I truly don't mind sharing all the great things that are happening in the district and our strengths and weaknesses. And so we can improve this, this district's whole. So, yeah, they'll continue, we'll continue to do this as things change.
Would you all have any comments?
You mentioned we would get a copy of this.
Yeah, I, yeah, you can email it and, uh, I'll, I'll send it, we're going to send it out to you all.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move into our leadership updates. Uh, Mr. Steven Little for maintenance. He's presented to us. Uh, do you have anything additional, Mr. Little? Thank you, Mr. Little. Next we have Mrs. Suzie Somerville, custodial director.
Good evening, Columbia, this is Columbia.
This is board members. How are y'all tonight?
Okay, uh, I just want to update three things that we're doing with the custodial department. The custodial department have implemented several strategies using the CDC ga- guidelines for daily cleaning. Uh, we doing like frequently touch items like door knobs, stairwells, sinks, tables, light switches, countertops, classrooms, desks and chairs, keyboards, faucets and sinks. We develop, we developed a schedule for increased routine cleaning since COVID nineteen. We use the products that meets the Environmental Protection Agency, uh, criteria. And also we got training on those, on, um, the disinfecting and cleaning and on the machines that we use. We have two basic machines that we use, the total three hundred and sixty machine, which is a machine that's on wheels that we go around, take around the building and spray. Every Wednesday, and then as needed. Then also we have a handheld electrostatic machine that we use, we go around and use also. So with those, they help us to disinfect and sanitize more thoroughly. Also they increase their wipe walkthroughs, like to restroom, uh, doing, uh, building, sanitizing door handles and light switches and this. So we doing that more frequently also. Also we taking out the trash more frequently, like a lot of people doing breakfast in the classroom and lunch in the classroom. So we taking that trash out more frequently. Also the custodial staff is working on fist acid. We have some fist acids that been in the building since I was going to school. Some of the things that the custodians can fix themselves, we are doing that. Some of the stuff we have to send out, send to the shop and some stuff are just unrepairable. You can't even get power from them anymore. So we working on that to get our fist acids cleared up at each location. Good evening, Mrs. Parks. We are, also we're right at summer cleaning. And summer cleaning, everybody, oh, you all glad it's summertime? No, that is the busiest time for the custodial staff. That's when we take out ninety-nine point nine percent of everything in every classroom, put it in the hall, strip, wax the floor, put it back in the room, strip and wax the hall. So that is a very busy time for us. Uh, never know what you're going to do from one day to the next because everything changed with a twinkle of our eye. So right now I got the custodians working on getting prepared for the new school year simply because of the fact that doing summer cleaning. When we finish with summer cleaning, wow, school is here. It's time to start. So we don't have time to go with things that we need. So we working on this now as well for the new year. So we have things we need because going back to, um, March of last year, which I guess I can't go back. But going back to March of last year, PPE, it took a long time to get it. And I figure now that we need to get what we need. So we'll have at least when school starts, we'll have what we need. Also, you know, we have elections going on. So we have elections held at the school. We had one last Tuesday and it's two more. One is going to be, uh, the runoff election is going to be April the twenty-seventh. And the general election is going to be Tuesday the eighth. And they're held at three locations, three locations, Brandon Central Office, Columbus High School and Fairview Elementary School. So we have to, um, they'll bring the polling booths out that Monday before and we'll set up for it. Then you have an election from seven to seven. Then they'll come back and pick them up that Wednesday morning. And basically that's about it. Custodial staff, um, any questions?
Ms. Somerville, you mentioned you had some machines that you use to help with the, based on CDC guidelines, based on the, um, COVID procedures that you are using. You had two, you mentioned two. Will you need additional machines?
Well, we have two types, but we have at the schools, we have elementary schools. Each one have, each one of the machines, two of their cap machines. The high schools have two, total three sixty and then one electric, two electrostatic machines. And Columbus Middle School, well, basically Columbus Middle School, Columbus High School have a total of four machines, two each. And then the elementary schools have two, have two, a total of two machines, one each.
And Mr. Young, I, I know that you have a child in district, but I also wanted to tell you that within our S, um, application, we're also buying devices so that we won't lose instructional time, um, temperature checks, um, and other devices that we're using on the current S application that's going to assist us in getting students in, um, more quickly during the year, especially at the middle school and high school. And buying additional equipment to ensure safety as our students return. So I forgot to, um, to, to, uh, give that, uh, extra tip there, but that is also part of our spending as we, as we work. And Mr. Dr. D, I'd like to detail that a little bit more. Did you want to comment?
Okay, that was it. It's the question if we needed more additional equipment, being able to have more students there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Parker. Thank you very much, Ms. Somerville. Next we have Mrs. Deborah Murray, curriculum. Welcome, Ms. Murray. How are you this afternoon?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair Cox, Members of the Board, Dr. Long. You should have a blue folder. Can you hear me now? You should have a blue folder in front of you. Um, the top page is going to be the data. The most recent data report we have, it's a combination of case and Questar benchmark data. The case benchmark is with our K two and then we included the Questar pilot benchmark for third grade, um, above and high school testing in English and Algebra one. The, um, the biology and the US history is still case. Because Questar, that's the test that we take with our state assessment is Questar. So we did a pilot with them. We were selected. Um, there were ten districts in the state of Mississippi that were selected to do the pilot. And so this is where this data came from. Now I have to give you a little caveat on this data. The case benchmark data is pretty accurate to what they put out the company does. The Questar, when they did this, they only gave us raw data. So I took the raw data, went back and looked at historical data from Questar and came up with my own configuration. So it's a ballpark figure of where the proficiency, um, lies with third grade through eighth grade in the ELA and the math and then with the English ten and the Algebra one. The reason we decided to go with that pilot though was, um, it helps us give a, our students get the feel of the state assessment. It gives them the look of what it is. And they are also using us, they're letting us give them feedback of what we want to see. So principals right now have a survey that they're going through with their staff with, and they are reporting to Questar. What do we want to see with reports going forward? Um, so that's their task to do by the end of this week. They'll have that survey completed and up to Questar. Are there any questions on that piece of dat- on those pages?
Sorry, that was a conference.
Yes, I'm sorry, it wasn't. It was a conference. And this was taken in March before spring break? So we still have, you know, the rest of March, April and May. So we still have, you know, the rest of March, April and May of instruction. This, and it was a comprehensive thing. It would be, it, it wasn't as long, but it was similar to the state assessment. If that makes sense.
So this, um, case Questar, the benchmark summaries that we're looking at, you know, it's giving us specific data points. But how will we, if we are not an educator, know how to use this information to actually see where our kids are?
So the one column is the projected proficiency. So that's telling you that that's what they're projecting for, for students to make fours and fives on the test. That, that's a percentage of your students that took the test. The projected passing is level three, four and five on a test, and that's the projected pass. Now, with the case benchmark, they actually give teachers a breakdown of, these are the standards that they're, the students need assistance with. And there are whole reports that they give, student by student, so the teacher gets that. With Questar, we do not have that yet, it just gave us a raw data for the student. So if you, there were twenty-five questions and you got twelve out of twenty-five, that's all you knew about it. Except with, with it, when, and which domain that you got it. But that was, like I said, it was part of the pilot, so we're asking them now, these, those are the things that principals are saying, I've had some discussions with principals. Well, we wanna see these kind of reporting. We want to know, can we have access to this? And so I've told them, put everything in your report, your survey report, because Questar's listening to us to be able to develop what they want to do with this. And their plan is to give it again in the fall, and it will, um, then they'll do another one again next spring. So they're building this as they go, and we're, you know, it's just, well, like I said, we're part of the pilot. Does that answer a question? And then also, um, I just gave you a sheet that kind of gives you a, a little, how we're gonna do data reports, the schedule of what we will get in data reports. So at the beginning of the year, within the first six weeks, we always take our I-ready diagnostics. So you should get that report somewhere within the six-week mark after school has begun. Then the middle of the year, um, we'll give, again, we'll give it late January, early February. And that's a pretty instant turnaround, I mean, we can get, we can pull the reports from that. It's not something that I have to wait for them to send, to look at the data and send it back. It's a pretty instant thing. So once we close it, it's just a matter of gathering the information and being able to pull it together. The in-case benchmark, which is the case benchmark, in-case, we'll give it, um, first nine weeks, um, we usually give it around October, but it takes, once I close the test, they have to take a week to two weeks to, before they send us the data back. Now, we can get some raw data off of it immediately, but for them to give us our nice little report saying where your students are, those type things, it usually a week or two weeks after I've closed it. And then we'll get it, we'll give it again in December, so I'll usually get that data around January. And then we give it around, um, late, uh, we give it around, right before spring break normally, and you can see this is when I got it back, you know, early April. And then we have our state assessments. We'll take those at the high school in the fall, around late November, early December. And we usually get that data around February, March. That was in your last, last month's board meeting, there were some, um, in Dr. Labat's presentation, she had the data in there from the biology, the English and the Algebra One, and the US history is still, this is a new year. Or, uh, it really shouldn't be a new year, last year should have been the new year, but they didn't finish testing. So they won't give us all of that data until they've done all of their work on it, and we'll probably get that as kind of proficiencies towards, in, when we get that rest of the data for this year. And then in August or September, we'll, we can usually give you a report back on spring testing. And then the areas in testing, I just wanted to kind of include those. In grades three through eight, it's ELA and math. Grades five and eight, it's science. And then, and of course, units, um, at the high school of biology, US history, English two and Algebra One. Any questions on that schedule?
No, but I did, I do have some questions on the summary that you presented first, because, I mean, obviously, this information is impactful to, uh, to everyone, whether you have a student in the district or not. When I start looking through all of the information here, starting on the math side of things, and I look and I see zeros. So, so let me, let me ask my question. So when I look at third grade, for example, in math, and I see zeros for the proficiency side, as you explained earlier in your talk, and then, of course, their estimate. And I, I understand this is a guestimation, I totally understand that part. But certainly, you've had to go by what you've had to come up the guestimation. And to put zeros down, that doesn't give me a lot of confidence that it's gonna come in at five percent, or twenty-five percent, or fifty percent, that you're gonna be that far off. The other part is, when I look at school to school, and I look at math, which is a very essential part of learning, whether you're going on engineering, you're gonna go into the military, whether you're going on college, you're gonna work with PACR, or any of those other things, you have, we talk about STEM, and we talk about coding, we talk about all of those things, but, you know, if I, and I'm not gonna single out one school, cause everybody who has this can look at it for themselves. And I see pass rates, you know, starting in second grade, of thirty percent to forty percent, and then it gets into the teens in third grade, and it drops into the single digits in fourth grade. And by the time we get to fifth grade, we're not even close to fifty percent. And then we also look at that same data, and we look at first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade math at those same locations. And you're looking at single digits, you're looking at maybe getting into the teens, uh, you're looking at a lot of zeros in the third grade, um, you know, as far as fours and fives, as you talked about. So being in the curriculum side of things for the district, what is exactly is being done while we're virtually and we're higher rated different things to ensure that once you actually get a true picture and assessment of things, those third graders can be fourth graders, fourth graders be fifth graders, or they're gonna be in middle school. And if we're seeing an assessment or a guestimation of this information that's giving us readings of zeros or tens, that seems probably pretty problematic.
Okay, so first, let me give you a caveat, and then I'm gonna go to answering the question. One thing with math, with reading, standards spiral. And, but they come back around, and you, we finished with just teaching the initial standard by January the latest, and they're just going back and going back on through there. In math, there are so many standards to teach that, forget testing or anything else, it takes us from day one until almost first of May to even teach every standard. So there are standards that were not taught, that were tested on here. So that's one caveat, because math is different for confidence. But to answer your question, we're going into, the next part of, we're gonna talk about is the curriculum and looking at highly qualified instructional materials. The other thing I've been talking to, I've really been working with the math coaches, our district math coaches, one of the things that we are beginning to really build with teachers, we're fixing to bring, start bringing them in, there's some professional development, we're gonna start doing with lead teachers, we're gonna do it this summer, within our summer school program, and we're looking to make sure we, we put this into place in our classes, starting in the fall. And it's using a pictorial, I'm sorry, a concrete pictorial abstract concept. And we do that anyway, but we're going to really truly stay with that model until the kids know the standard before we move on with them. So that's one piece that we're putting into place with it. We're also looking at different programs, what do we need to be doing with the curriculum? We talked to principals about it, we brought them in, we looked at what we need to do for, for professional development to help our teachers, to help our students.
And it's important also, aspect, uh, as we triangulate data, I know you all received the case benchmark data, and the numbers seemed a little different, because that's a progression of where they are at the current moment at the end of the third nine weeks, as opposed to an entire year. And it's also this Questar assessment, um, is a, I would say, a condensed version of a test. So a kid may get one or two questions on specific standards, and if it hadn't been taught, then it's a little separate. Um, you know, that's an indication, so we really have to triangulate data and look at everything. But we are in a crisis, and this is a very difficult situation. Our students have been here part-time, and we understood that we would have some difficulties if this relates to learning.
And talking about, like, the ones who are virtual, in the, in the hybrid, when they're getting it, going back to that concept of the concrete pictorial abstract, and that's the way all, all the research tells you to teach math, that's, that's what it does. The kids are not in front of us every day getting that practice, getting that hands-on constantly. So that's part of, another result of being in the situation where you're in with COVID. But yes, it is a dire situation, and we are problem solving, and we talk about it every day. Any other questions on that?
You have a question, Jill?
I did. Um, are the, are we, I know we're offering summer school, but with, um, looking at the elementary students, are, are the students gonna be required to attend summer school? How does that work?
It is an option. Um, so we have opened it up, you know, we first sent some sheets out to principals and said, select some kids so that we make sure we get them in. And we, we did that, and then I went back and talked to Dr. Labat, and she said, we're not turning any child away. We'll do whatever we need to, to get them in. So we opened it up to everyone. Um, they gave me a count today, and I'm, I wanna say we were right at two hundred kids who have signed up, but that's all the way from, who are current pre-K through eleven, current eleventh graders. So we're still, we're, I actually got, um, Ms. Clayton to do me another flyer, and do another Facebook post, and do another, um, bathroom class, and y'all just know that's coming, if you're a parent in here, trying to get everyone to sign up, because the more we can have the kids here, the better off we are. So we're really trying to push it, the teachers are pushing it, they're asking their kids to come, they're talking to them. But once again, it's not a require, it's an option. You know, so parents have to say, and we're only doing face-to-face in summer school, that's all we're doing.
Can I answer your question real quick, piggybacking off of that? I was just thinking, and, uh, you know, telephone calls is an excellent way to, uh, inform parents. And if our parents are informed as to where their children are, where my child is, I'll take myself. And I know exactly how my child is faring right now. And then I make that decision, you know, maybe a way that we could have a parent, or small parent meetings, I know we can't have large meetings, distance, or whatever, but at the same time, when we're actually talking and meeting with those parents, I'm thinking years ago, how we had the one-on-one parent meeting, showing them exactly where your child is right now with all the classes, whether virtual or hybrid, whatever, where your child is right now educationally, and where, all right, where do you want them to be? Where they are, and how summer school remediation, uh, we can say enhancement, or whatever, uh, word that we give it, that is pinpointing that particular child to move on. If the parents fully understand the, um, learning loss that's actually taking place, some of our parents are very young, and some of them may not be looking at this the way that we as educators are looking at it, as it being totally optional. It has to be optional, because we can't mandate that a child comes to school during the summer months. There's a hundred and eighty days in a school year legally. So if that be the case, we must create ways to inform the parents about the need for their child to attend the summer school during the period, I believe I read it, during the, uh, a period of time during the month of June.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a small sacrifice to make in order to prepare your own child to move and to be more, to be ready for August that's coming in. If these, if these parents, let's say at Cook, for example, where, uh, fourth grade, that's that zero that's sitting there, whatever children are falling in that room, then there should be meetings set up, the parents should know, all right, this is where your child is. If those children are right there, then the grades that they have just received from, uh, their progress report, report cards should, uh, very well show that they are actually what, they're actually failing. And we can't rely totally on COVID, all right? We've had our share with COVID, and now, you know, a lot of us have gone, we're moving forward past that. We can't, because next year this time, we still may be wearing masks. So what we have to do is do our own remediations creatively. You know, we've been talking about funds all night, we have the funds. So right now, we are creative enough that we get our parents energized to, and to buy into the realization that their children, our children, need to come to school as if it was mandatory. Because as a parent, it should be mandatory to you. Right now, we have two hundred kids, if you have, we have a total of thirty-two, thirty-four thousand. I'm sorry. Oh, you're right, we're not Shelby, okay. So we have a total of basically three thousand two hundred students, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So where are the other three thousand? Where are the other three thousand? If, if the students are doing well, we can have, uh, enrichment programs for them, to keep them moving along.
That planned, and just made, had to put out, um, Ms. Cox, um, so you're exactly right. And, um, we will, um,
And they also look at data, inviting, uh, parents, um, where they were, where they were at the current moment. So we base it on need first, so we invite those students that were first behind first, and then we open it up. And we've also done some extensive things, we try to do some more recruiting, so we can meet the needs of our students by getting some students at the W that are in the teaching profession, to get more, just to get more parents sign up. But, um, typically, we usually have between two hundred and fifty, three hundred students in public summer school.
I'm particularly in mind, you know, and I want, our time has been well spent, but, uh, in mind for our high school, our high school kids. You know, when they come into the ninth grade, they're in their cohort, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And when they're in that cohort, that counts towards our graduation rate.
So just take it that way.
Yes, okay. If that's our graduation rate, then our pre-cohort, I've always gone pre, before you even get to ninth grade, uh, six, seven, eight, and even before. You know, the preparations towards them when they do make it to the ninth grade, that that ninth, tenth, eleventh grade class, if you start with a class in the ninth grade, that you'll graduate with them, you know, your class, that's your class. So, um, with that said, for the summer months, I, I'm sure that we have students that are not passing enough grades to graduate traditionally, or with any of, any of the others. So at this time, the other options, the graduation options. So at this time, do we know who those students are? And if we are planning for them to have, uh, participate in summer school in whatever courses that they may be failing in, to prepare them for graduation.
Yes, ma'am. So at the high school level, the ones who have already entered the high school, yes. And, uh, Monte Ewing at the high school is really and truly heading up a lot of this plan, but she's looking at those, she's looking at the course, and she's looking at some eighth grade students who will be going into ninth grade, who are coming in already behind. And she is, um, developing a plan with them, she's looking at some, um, possible initial credit for them so that they can get caught up. She's looking at some credit recovery for some students at the high school who may need it. Uh, we use a program called Edgenuity that helps with that, and so she's really developing that and working with it along the lines of, she's also trying to make sure that the kids get a well-rounded, it's not just coming in and getting the, the, the coursework and, and going on. She's actually got several field trips planned that she wants to do, she wants them to go to a bank, she wants them to learn about credit, credit in the real world, bank, not credit for school. So, um, she's planning a lot of that, she's been working with me and, you know, coming up with some great ideas and things that she's trying to get her students to do. And is that the students you were talking about, Ms. Cox?
Yeah, those students, what we call them in the gray areas.
Yes, ma'am.
Those gray areas.
And then we are looking at some eighth grade students that may not make it onto ninth grade the next year. And so if they do- And so, if they don't, then those kids are already, because in eighth grade, you're already getting high school credits. You start getting those high school credits in eighth grade. You get that, you take that math credit with you. Um, you know, you can take that ICT two credit. You know, there are credits that you can take with you. And so, we're looking at those students to see if there's a cohort of those that we need to kind of put together to kind of push through. And so...
Are they part of NTSS?
That...
Those eighth graders that you're referring to?
I just have to get particular names. Do what?
They would probably be in tier three, you think?
Then you have some in tier three, yes, ma'am.
Well, do you all have any other questions?
Going forward, are we going to be using the same resources to try to mitigate the learning loss?
And that, um, so that was the next thing. Dr. Robot kind of talked to you a little bit about the highly qualified instructional materials. So, we, what, um, she did, she pushed out and told the schools to start looking at. She had teachers getting involved with this. She had, she coached up with the principals and then the principals took it on to their teachers. And they really and truly looked at a lot of materials. Then the principals came in and they met with the curriculum team. We discussed the different, um, types of things that we could use, what resources would they need? We want, talked about, um, professional development that need to be done. If we chose a certain thing, what would we need? What would teachers need for professional development just to dig deeper in to teach the students? So, I'm in the process of right now trying to get some quotes on different things that the schools have talked about. And that should be bringing, I should be bringing that forth to you hopefully within the next board meeting or so. Just depending on how that all plays out. If it, it doesn't have to go through the bid process, then I'd have to bring it to you for that purpose too. And that's what Dr. Robot was saying. So, you will be seeing that, that that, that step's coming. And then, um, part of the Summer Smart Academy, we've actually built in some professional development for teachers and planning. So, that, that cohort of teachers who are really working for us this summer, they're starting to already get some of that professional development that we plan for everyone next year. And then, starting not this Wednesday, I think it's next Wednesday, we will start bringing in teachers on Wednesdays, a group of teachers. Each school is sending a lead teacher from every grade level in pre-K, well, K five. And we're doing a little bit different with the pre-K. They're doing something through MDE, but with the K five. And we're, they're going to start working with the planning, but they're also going to look and say, how can we go deeper with this? So, that's, they're going to work with the coaches and that's a, they're going to be here most of the day on Wednesdays, going through that and doing that with us until school's out. And just, um, I'm going to take your suggestion, Ms. Cox. And we had some teachers who contacted parents and said, okay, you know, you need to have your child in here. But, we have a district YPLC coming up. And I'm just going to, you know, really ask teachers, call these parents, look at these kids, do that call. I'm definitely going to take that because we planned a lot of fun things trying to get them in, like field trips and those type things, getting back to real school. But, um, now I'm going to do that to make sure that there's that personal touch because my Falcon class is really and truly not a personal touch, not like a phone call where I just called you and asked you. So, thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. And I wrote that down. You have a good suggestion. So, yeah, I'll be, thank you. Great suggestion.
Alright, any other question? Thank you, um...
Thank you very much. I appreciate your hard work. You have a big job. Thank you so very much. Now, we have Mr. J.C. Lawton. Hello?
Hello, I'm trying to get it short and sweet. As you saw, we have ten or eleven cameras, uh, installed across the campus. Um, well, all, all but nine, uh, I'm waiting on a couple more cords to come in the next few days to finish those installations next week. That's three of the high schools, six of the middle school. Uh, we have, uh, a migration from Chalkville I now, which is our current SIS, our student information system, to Power School. It's going to happen this summer. Uh, we are, uh, dealing with some firewall issues. Still working on that. Uh, it has caused some intermittent problems with some random websites, um, but we're handling that as we go. Um, other than that, you know, we're just handling with, uh, normal stuff. Our ticket numbers have, uh, climbed drastically from last year, from what I understand. Uh, I asked my staff, obviously, I lived here last year, I asked my staff and they averaged around sixty to eighty, eighty tickets. Uh, that would be where they fluctuate. You know, you close twenty, however many would come back in. Uh, but we can't get below two hundred, two hundred and thirty. Uh, you know, we've nearly tripled our inventory of active computers, um, because of, we went one-to-one. Uh, and then just all the influx of other things that have come in. This with, you know, from Hospital seventeen eighty-eight and EDLA project. So, we're still dealing with that. Uh, but we're working as fast as we can. And, uh, yeah, that's all I have. Any questions?
How many staff members do you, do you have on your team?
Uh, we currently have five staff members, not including myself, and we have one empty position.
And it's seven, including yourself?
Uh, usually there would be seven, yes. Uh, there's one empty position right now.
Oh, okay.
And I will be, I, we haven't discussed this too formally, um, this is, uh, but, you know, I've got, in our EDLA project, uh, we talked about, you know, kind of reorganizing the department, talking about, um, network administrators, stuff like that, to help manage this. Right now, I'm currently the IP director, the network admin, the cybersecurity guy, you know, you name it. I'm filling a couple of these roles. Uh, so, more help is always beneficial. With more inventory, obviously, more help is beneficial. Uh, but I, you know, I think my team is, um, very capable. They're, they're doing a great job with what we've been hanging this year. Uh, I'm not complaining about having so much money thrown at us. That's awesome. And it's, I, I think, uh, hearing the stories from the kids having laptops is really, you know, driven our team this year, um, but it hasn't been a lot. You know, we're, we're working as fast as we can.
Small staff is such a large job.
Um, in the request you get, the two hundred, two hundred and thirty, is there a pattern? Um, do you see, are there certain things that always seem to be messed up, anything like that?
Yes, ma'am. There's, there's always certain things. Um, a lot of it is obviously kids messing up laptops. Uh, we have younger students, we have more younger students now. Um, so you have a lot more, uh, you know, uh, broken keyboards or broken screens because they're dropping them or something like that. And we do have protective cases and these are educational laptops. So, they're made to be, you know, they're waterproof keyboards and stuff, but kids will be kids. Um, and there's only so much you can do. Uh, and, and then there's, obviously, I mentioned the firewall problems. A lot of these requests are also, you know, um, I may not be able to get to this website or something like that, which I handle that. Uh, we've really, really cracked down this year on what websites students and staff members and students can get to. Uh, it, it, you know, we did a really good job of civic compliance before. Uh, but it's even those things outside of civic compliance on the security side, uh, that we're really, really trying to crack down. Uh, again, more kids, I mean, it's more kids trying to get around our filters, right? Uh, and that's something that's, uh, I've really focused on in the past month or two. Um, the principals have been great. We have LearnSafe, which tells us, uh, it, it looks for certain keywords and typing and stuff like that, images. Uh, it's got a great advanced software system, uh, and it tells us what, uh, kids, or it tells us when kids get around our stuff. And I can kind of, uh, look at those screenshots, decipher how are they doing it? And I very quickly, uh, the principals get those devices to me and I can investigate further, so yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lawton. Appreciate everything you do. Next, we have transportation update, Dr. Bill.
I'm going to take off my mask. And I stay by this. And as you know, uh, last, uh, last board meeting, Mr. Page did a transportation update. Uh, and I'm going to refresh that update and then move forward and some other things. Uh, currently have twenty-nine running buses.
Uh, five on spare, twenty-four regular. Uh, one of the spare buses is still in the shop for repairs. I do have Mr. Page here to give us an update if, if we have any other updates on the buses. Uh, two regular buses are still in the shop for repairs. Currently, we have thirty-six, uh, people in the transportation department. And those thirty-six people include the interim director, administrative assistants, which is with Ms. Wax, period, the central office that does all of the, uh, you know, administrative duties for the transportation department. And, and when I say that, it's she's doing the requisitions, the phone calls and, and so forth to, uh, keep transportation moving in the right direction. Uh, we got twenty-six drivers. And, and saying the twenty-six drivers, we, uh, really want to push to get about thirty-five total drivers when we, when it's all said and done. Hopefully, uh, as we go forward, we're going to, uh, set up some training after the, uh, our job fair to try to get some, uh, more drivers trained to take the, the CDL test. Once they take that CDL test, they'll be able to get trained this summer with the, uh, road, uh, portion of the testing to get their CDL certification. Uh, we do have two on-call sub-drivers and six A's. And those A's basically were hired in for our, uh, spare buses and to help, help with those, uh, the transportation of our, uh, our spare students. Now, currently, we are leasing the lot over at Waters. We have a, uh, an agreement, a service agreement slash leasing the lot agreement at Waters. And right now, uh, this lease is, is scheduled to term out on June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Now, in saying that, I, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we consider extending that on a month-to-month basis, considering if we're deciding, whether we're going to decide on getting a building or not. And I think, I gave you in the package, your resources, you know, there, there were two buildings that, uh, we have looked at. And there was one other one that was coming up that we wanted to do a lease program. Now, the two buildings that I have in your package are two that the owners are interested in selling those buildings. They're, they're not really interested in doing a lease, uh, anything like that. They want to really sell those buildings. So, those two buildings are, are in that package which, which you have. And while, while I'm saying that, it, in looking at the lot, we have overgrown that lot. I, I'm not going to, you know, silvercoat it. If we, uh, look at purchasing any more buses this year, uh, and which we, we are looking at doing, uh, we're, we're not, we're going to throw that lot. So, we're going to need to think about the future and where we want to go, what we want to do with our transportation department. Uh, right now, as far as the service agreement goes, uh, I gave you the ballpark figure as far as what we've spent to year to date. And that's right at forty-one, three. Now, in thinking of that and, and thinking about what we talked about before, uh, Ms. Young, is the fact that does it add up to what we will be paying, uh, maintenance of what a mechanic, a certified mechanic? If we were to have a certified mechanic, we'll be making around this month, this, this guest salary. If not, a little bit more, a little bit less. But, it's, it's very close to the ballpark of what, uh, certified mechanic would be, a unit salary for a certified mechanic would be. So, I, and saying that, I think the service agreement has turned out to be pretty beneficial to us, uh, in, in terms of, of doing waters and, and, and I'm going to say, I'm committing Mr. Page because Mr. Page has been diligent at making sure that they do, you know, fulfill the, when they, when the buses are in the shop, they are doing what they're supposed to be doing with those buses and not just trying to give us any kind of excess charges. So, he's, he's done that and I've actually, you know, been one of those that, that kind of look at those requisitions on a daily basis and say, wait a minute, what is this here, Mr. Lang is charging? Or what is this here charged? We need to go back and make sure that they are charging us the right labor price that they originally agreed to. So, those things are taking place and though, and, and, and I, I really am, you know, in a position where I can say that Waters has done, you know, they're, they're, they've held up there and been debarking on this. So, in, in saying that, I, I think we're in pretty good shape. Now, in discussing the, the, uh, service agreement as before, it's, it's really tough to find a certified mechanic right now. And, and it's, it's been that way. We, we advertised and we still have to advertise. But, we come across a mechanic assistant and the mechanic assistant, Mr. Page, lasted how long?
Uh, less than a week.
Okay. So, in, in saying that, you know, we're, we're basically still, you know, struggling on that mechanic side. So, Mr. Page does an excellent job in, in his, his knowledge of diesel and mechanic engine as far as working with him. And, and we do have a, a driver that is slash, uh, mechanic assistant that's helping him and he's coming along pretty good. So, those two together are, are handling it. But, again, with, without the help of, uh, Waters, we would, we would be in a situation. Uh, and also saying that, when I look at the, uh, maintenance and, and talking about the buses that we have, there are several buses on your list that we, that I gave you. Uh, and they, these buses are parked at the, at the, uh, stadium parking lot. Now, some of these buses, and Mr. Page, I'm going to get him to come up and help me with these as far as, you know, the specifics on some of them and what's going on with them. But, some of them, they do start, or they did start when we moved them there. Now, being in a situation of, of being over there and sitting up, then we've gotten into some situations and, Mr. Page, if you want to come up, we're talking about, uh, how they start, how they started those buses up in the beginning and what caused the damages that may have been, may be on those buses right now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With the, uh, buses over at the, at the Fieldhouse parking lot. Although I don't have a computer to diagnose the problems, I do know, uh, do know a lot about the maintenance of these. And one of the major things that these buses have experienced is the fact that they've been using starter fluid, which is called ether, in these diesel engines. Long-term exposure with this kills the injectors, kills the motors, kills the pistons. You're not going to be able to start it. It will freeze, it'll actually freeze it up. Uh, several of these engines over here, uh, when I first hired on back in August, we tried to get them started. We even tried to use this, could not even turn them over at this point in time. They sat for too long. Diesel engines are like people. You've got to move. And they have to move. If, uh, you stay seated, you're not going to be moving. That's what a diesel engine, a diesel engine wants to run. And when they don't run for several months, they get gummed up. Diesel engines, fuel in there will get gummed up, just like in a car, an old car with a carburetor. They're going to get gummed up and they're not going to work anymore. Uh, this past week, uh, myself and Gavin, who's my assistant, went over there. We worked on seven buses. Three of them, we actually got up and running. Out of all of them, we changed batteries. We even tried jumping them off with other buses. No fire. Could not get them to start. This can be because of emergencies or severe electric, uh, cer- severe electrical, electrical problems in the system.
May I, may I ask a question? So, going back to what you said earlier about starter fluid, those different things. Uh, and I won't go into the company that shall not be named. Um, would that have been a practice that may have occurred during that particular time, that company that shall not be named?
I can tell you when I came here in August, I threw away forty cans of starter fluid that were in these buses. Now, these buses were somewhere else before they came here. And all these cans were emptied.
Okay.
So...
I apologize. I've got a headache the size of the Grand Canyon. Could you say that one more time?
There were over forty cans of starter fluid in all these buses that I threw away and they were empty.
Okay.
So, they had been using them to prank these buses. And since these buses were being used, like you said, by another, by another establishment along with us, I'm pretty sure, and after listening to several of the drivers who told me, this is how we started.
So, Mr. Dunn, may I ask a quick question of you? So, Mr. Dunn, may I ask a quick question of you? Without getting into specifics, that's gonna have me getting in trouble for saying the company's name that should not be named. Is that just too, too bad we didn't look into it before we figured this out?
This is just something you need to have a discussion in executive session. Doesn't need to be in public forum.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question? Of course. What, tell me, um, in layman's terms for me, what is starter fluid? Cause I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about a, a different type of starter fluid, like, I don't know, lighter fluid.
Starter fluid is a, is a spray that goes, that you spray into the air intake. And it helps, it helps starting an engine up when it won't, when it won't fire over. It creates a, it creates a more of a spark. But the thing is, and you have to realize, and this is where people don't understand, car engines and diesel engines are two different items. In a car, you have, you have spark plugs. You have, uh, you have fuel, air, and fire. That's what causes your car to go. The spark plugs makes the fire. In a diesel, you do not have a spark plug. You have glow plugs. And a glow plug creates heat. And you only use that to start the vehicle up. Now, what happens is, in a diesel, when the fuel is, uh, I, I wanna say, uh, mistified, that's not really the correct word, but when the diesel is put into a, into a mist, into the, um, into the piston airframe, it goes so hard, it, the compression on those creates a heat, which can cause it to explode. And that's because of combustion. You don't have that in regular cars. You have that only in diesels. So using that, it creates more of a fire, but then the engine gets too used to it and the injectors get too used to it and it comes up, becomes useless.
So now we have how many buses that are in that, pretending?
You have, right now, there are eight to ten buses I cannot even get started.
Eight to ten? Is that on the first page here, those, those buses that are listed?
That's second.
Yeah.
Rebuilt new engine?
Oh, that's eight, nine. That's nine.
And see, what, and then you look at the second, the next page too. And, and according to, according to, uh, Mr. Page, the mileage on these buses is around, what, fifty thousand?
Some of them range from fifty to eighty thousand dollars, just about.
And you look at it, and they're all oh-nine, oh-eight, oh-nine. You got one nineteen ninety-eight, one two thousand one. But the mo, most of these are oh-eight and oh-nine, oh-nine really. So that, that was a whole group of buses that was purchased in the same, sounded like the same time frame. Uh, two, you got a two thousand and two thousand six, two thousand five. But majority of them, I think, two, two thousand nine.
No, what's the average, um, that you would get out of a bus?
If you take care of a, a diesel should run, I mean, just like a truck, but if you take care of it, it can do like this.
Diesels will run for a very long time, but the thing about diesels, just like your car, they need to be serviced every, every time. Oil needs to be changed. Uh, transmission fluids, everything needs to be changed, just like, even though these buses are not going that many miles a day, you know, every six months, they need oil changes, transmission fluid change, filter changes, everything. And this is things that I found that would have not been done.
So I guess we can, uh, go, uh, this is a topic to be discussed further in our executive session.
Uh, it depends on what's the reason. You know, that, that, yeah, that would be a, yeah. But I did give you a list, uh, the services that, that has taken place with Waters, bus numbers, and, uh, those things, uh, also the ones that were taking place. And that, that forty-one thousand actually included the eighteen thousand that was upfront, so. We, uh, what, I, I, and I'mma say it again, I don't think that was too, you know, too out of, out of, of the ballpark for the salary of a mechanic. Now, again, on, on the, uh, other issue as far as the, uh, buildings that we've talked about and we, we looked at, those were two of the buildings that the board had, uh, actually prior, uh, inquiries on. Uh, the one in front of the school, well, right down from the school on Hemlock, uh, that particular owner is, uh, interested in, in, uh, purpose selling that building. Also, the one on Idrawal, that, that owner is interested in selling. Now, the one on Idrawal, I think it's about four acres. I'm not sure of the total acreage on the one on Hemlock, but it is a, it's a large, large field on the backside. You got those pictures as well.
Can I go back to the, uh, uh, the buses, the number of buses? And the bus, you know? Um, the number of buses that we have that's in working condition is how many?
Right at twenty, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine that's in working condition? Okay. And we need thirty-five additional?
No, 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 no.
That's what I thought.
No.
Okay.
You would, no, you would be, if we look at, you're twenty, you got twenty-nine running buses. Five of them are spared, twenty-four are regularly. So in, in looking at that, that's the eleven that you would have to, to go regularly to get to that thirty-five.
Okay. With, with that question, uh, during a recent board meeting, uh, the master, uh, lease program was mentioned? And you were gonna look into that?
Right, uh, actually, myself and Holly was gonna look into it and, and Holly had to leave. But at any rate, uh, we were looking into that master lease program. But she's also was thinking, uh, how we could be in a position to, you know, purchase those buses as opposed to doing that master lease. So we, we didn't get deeper into that master lease program as we wanted to because she was gonna look at the other, the other, uh, aspect of the budget and, and working on, uh, trying to work those eleven buses. Now, I'mma tell you, in, in looking at the mediating mitigation for COVID-nineteen, we are looking at trying to do an additional three buses for social distancing purposes. That would put you.
Additional three for social distancing. So when we have our, um, maybe our board retreat, you, she'll be able to give us more information?
On the master lease, cause she was saying something about what, what, how would benefits be? If we would be, it would be more beneficial to do that master lease program as opposed to, you know, get the buses out, right? I'm not sure what she can go with right now.
Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Anybody have any, uh, questions or comments about the, the buildings?
Um, I just would like to know the, the size of the lot on Hemlock.
And, and I, I would have to find that, uh, that I would have to, you know, check with the owner on that because it goes all the way back. Uh, there's a, I know there's a, another little business on this side. And then it goes back all the way, that's, you know, all them houses on the backside of it. It goes back, there's a little shed in that back part, that back corner of that lot. And that's still part of that, uh, that, that, you know, lot that he's trying to sell. So I just have to go back and get with him and get the dimensions. But it's, it's, it's a deep lot, really. Now, the thing, thing about that one is, and I say, say this, uh, that building has two different sides to it. And which, in all essence, can and could possibly house both maintenance and transportation. Or whatever else, you know, you need to do as far as storage stuff. Because it is, it's, it's pretty large. Now, the one on Idrawal, and, and this one, that one has four doors, four roll-up doors, I mean, big doors. Now, the one on Idrawal have the two doors, but I don't, the only one that would be access for a bus would be that back door in, in coming in on Idrawal. So the front of it, it has office space, but it's only, uh, the size, I think it may be able to hold maybe one or two buses at the door. Where that other, the one on Hemlock is gonna, it'll, it'll, it'll hold probably up to eight and a half.
Doctor?
Yeah, um, okay, we're talking about the buildings.
Yeah.
But the buses would also be parked there, correct?
Yes.
And is the Idrawal, I mean, I looked at the pictures, but I couldn't tell. It looks like a field.
Right, in the, in the back, the back of that lot, it's got gravel on that ground.
Uh-huh, is that in a floodplain? Because I noticed the buildings are all up.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because with all this rain, I would not want to be, you know, looking at pulling buses out of the road.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So what would we be, do you know ballpark, what we would be looking at annually with, um, the lease from Waters?
On what, that, that lot? Uh, there's still the lot that they, they have right now. If, and, and talking to Mr. Waters, he, uh, his, uh, he, he says his, I think nephew and son own the other lot right next to it. And if he want, if we wanted to increase it, he could. But if we, we left it like it is right now, right now, what we're doing is a thousand dollars a month on that property. And, uh, as far as moving forward, I, he's not gonna increase that if we leave what we got. Now, if he gives us any more area, then he would, uh, increase it just according to whatever it would cost to improve that area, is what he told me.
Madam President, if I could, um, if you recall back, we were first discussing the Idrawal property and the board took it up and approved the lease with that particular, uh, owner before he came back and went and honored the, the, what we were gonna do, uh, or had asked to do, or approved to do, uh, we approved the lease, it was one thousand four hundred fifty dollars a month.
Right.
Which is about, you know, forty-five percent more than what we're paying Waters currently uh, to, you know, to give some type of relief remedies to that situation. So just, and so we'll remember what was done and not honored and then what we worked to resolve and kind of where we stood with our attention to begin with.
Right.
Good point, thank you.
And then, and, and to say that, the other building that we looked at before too was on Lindbergh. And he was wanting two thousand a month for that position. And that building, we didn't have to go in and upgrade or improve it for, for that.
So in looking at these, where you just kind of, you mentioned Idrawal, but if you, even if you went to the other building, what type of upgrades would be needed or is there any upgrades that would be needed? Would you have to?
It wouldn't, i- in that building, the only thing that I would see happening is getting, uh, equipment for the mechanics, the tools, you know, any, any kind of jacks and things like that for the mechanics to work on the buses with. And which they're gonna need anyway, once we, if we, you know, find a certified mechanic. We need to get a, we do need to get a computer, if I'm not mistaken, to, you know, to read the, uh, I guess you would say, what you call that? Diagnostic computer. So you, we still need to get one of those anyway. So those things, we would have to, you know, end up getting to supply or to furnish that particular building. Now, as far as, uh, the roof, I think the man said the roof was fairly, it was a new roof on there because I think it was damaged by the hailstorm maybe a year ago. So they ended up redoing the roof on, there were one on Hemlock. Now, Idrawal, I know the inside, they did have a situation where some homeless people went in and turned on the water, let the water run, so there's some water damage that took place in there. And I don't know, did you go in there and see the, uh, extent of that?
They, uh, the upstairs was, uh, flooded water. They had to come in and, uh, basically rip out all the park and everything, but they, uh, since then, fixed everything.
Okay, so both of the lots look open. Would we not have to do things like fencing against this?
You would have to fence it in order to, uh, secure it. You would have to fence it.
And lighting.
We have to do lighting and cameras again and get, and we just actually, you know, got our lights and the cameras, the ones that, that's at this lot. We can't move them, but, uh, again, that would be, you know, just at our expense and movement again.
And the inside of the building you're saying is ready to go?
With some cleaning, I, it, it wouldn't take much to get it up to, I don't think up to fall, would you think?
Any building has any major damage? The one on Idrawal was car locks. So it's been equipped with drainage and everything for that particular build. Uh, the one on Hemlock, it's wide open, it's got, it's, it's four, it, there was a, if you, well, like I said, put a bunch of buses in there and work on the inside.
Okay, and is this lot gravel?
Some part, the front part is, on the, on Hemlock, on that back, the back of that building, the front part is red.
So we would have.
Yeah, we, we, uh, Mr. Little and myself, when I went out and took the pictures, we walked back there to see how far that gravel went, and it went almost halfway. But it was, you know, you still had some grass that grew over.
So right now, with, uh, Waters, if, uh, the board, if we decided to continue the lease with, uh, Waters, any, uh, new buses that we may have purchased or the ones that may have been repaired, uh, could you give us some type of quote if we do decide to extend with him?
I could, I could ask you.
For the additional block?
I can ask you to work here. But the other idea I would have, and I'm, I'm just putting it out there, might get thrown down. But let's keep in mind, uh, we got zone off in those buses now. So if we got zone off, the bus drivers can clock any clock out from their buses. So in order to alleviate some of that old load, we, if we allow some of the buses to, some of the drivers to take their buses home, that may be another aspect. And I, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, but I don't know how you all feel as board in, you know, dealing with that. I mean, we still have the, the insurance and the liability on that, on those buses. So that, that would be the only concern that I would see.
I have heard of that being done before. So board, do you have any other questions, concerns? Mr. Spark, how you doing? So what we'll, what we'll do is, uh, take everything you said under consideration.
Okay.
And, uh, will, will you please bring, bring this back again so that we can continue to discuss, so that, uh, give us the information that we're asking and quotes? Uh, especially if we're looking at making a purchase of one of these buildings, what it would take for us to bring it up to par? As far as the gravel that may be needed, fencing, any lighting, the lights, appropriate lights around it? So that all of that can be added into the, uh, budget. And we'll be able to see the difference in each of, uh, the different options.
You also want the lot shot?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right.
Now we'll move to, um, I've got on the board agenda, five, open. Now, we'll move to, um, item on the board agenda, five, open forum policy, B, C, B, D. Do we have anyone here for open forum, ma'am? Thank you. I'd like to welcome, uh, Rudy Watkins. Pratt, Pratt Company?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, topic, facilities, Essa and Energy. Thank you, and welcome to the district.
Thank you for having me. Evening, just a little light reading. Y'all have enough to read up here. I'm gonna just keep this short and sweet, interest everybody's time, uh, and as Ms. Cox alluded to earlier, my name is Rudy Watkins, now with the Pratt Company. Uh, interesting to hear on the topics tonight, especially Essa Fund Funding, that's one, one of the topics that I want to bring before the board tonight. I know Ms. Rogers, Dr. Labatt, and the trustees have been keyed in from that topic, has, uh, all of, all this funding has been coming down from the federal government. Pratt Company, uh, so we, we specialize in facilities and infrastructure, we're what's known as an energy services company, so there's only ten that are registered with the Mississippi Department of, uh, Mississippi Department, uh, to do this type of work, right? So, we go into public facilities, and we evaluate, audit, uh, all of your infrastructure and utilities, and find a way to come up with solutions to lower those utilities and leverage those savings to help pay for capital and deferred maintenance projects. Mr. Little earlier was talking about your roofs, and that there's some issues with some of your roofing right now, right? So, one of the ways that we can help find some funds for that, right, is through energy performance contracting. Some of the reading that I gave you right, right now, there's three main documents in there. One from MDE, just letting you know that this type of work, this procurement process, type of, uh, work that we do is allowed when it comes to Essa Funding, so just to create some clarity on that. Second is kind of the process that we're, uh, providing for districts when it comes to, hey, if you want to use some of your Essa Funds to do some indoor air quality improvements, when it comes to HVAC equipment, as well as windows and doors, kind of what that process looks like, as well as a case study from, uh, one of our recent clients on the coast, Long Beach School District. I think that kind of plays well with what you, uh, what you guys here at Columbus are looking at, you're looking at some issues with some of your roofs, right? Well, down in Long Beach, they had some issues with their windows and doors, and so are their older elementary schools. A lot of hurricanes, a lot of salt, a lot of, uh, moisture in there, and they needed some upgrades, and they used, uh, this type of, uh, procurement process, energy performance contracting to do this. So, what, what they did, they hired us, they, uh, went up for qualifications, it's a competitive process, and we went in over four to six months and audited all their facilities. So, we counted all their light bulbs, we looked at all their HVAC equipment, looked at their, all their building on the lips, uh, as well as their HVAC controls, and we came up with a plan to help lower their half a million dollar a year, uh, energy bill by almost a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So, we used those savings over a lifetime of a project, anywhere from fifteen to twenty years, to help pay for those upgrades at those two elementary schools. And so, now those two elementary schools now have a, a, an aesthetic upgrade, as well as hurricane proof of just the doors, uh, seeing as down there on the coast, that, that's pretty, that's pretty important, right? So, wanted to come before the board tonight, uh, introduce myself, give you guys the opportunity to ask questions about what we do. I think the unique opportunity for, for the trustees, uh, Dr. Labatt's administration here, is not only all the Essa Funding that you have, so we're, we're mechanical engineers, we're general contractors, construction management, and architects, right, so we're all of them under one, so it's one source of responsibility, instead of having a routine management, several, several different vendors when it comes to this type of work. So, uh, so you have all this money, some of it can be used for not only learning loss, right, especially when it comes to the Essa, Essa three, but, uh, some of it can be used for indoor air conditioning, right, so that's, that's bringing more outside air in, so that we're circulating the air, uh, making sure that the kids are, the children are breathing in good air, as well as what's called oxygenation. All of these unique things can be used, right, with its federal funds, but along with that, what our, our company offers is the opportunity to leverage those dollars, uh, along with energy savings, right? So, I, I, Ms. Rogers, I'm sure has, uh, the ability to flip pretty quickly, but if the district has a five hundred thousand dollar a year to a million dollar a year utility budget, uh, off, off the top, we're able to lower that anywhere from fifteen to thirty-five percent. If you leverage those savings over fifteen, twenty years, we can help pay for a new roof at several of your buildings, right? Uh, with LED lighting, energy efficient HVAC controls, uh, making sure that all your doors and windows are weatherized. Those are just some of the opportunities, low hanging fruit really, especially with the light, lighting produces your energy, uh, anywhere from fifty to seventy percent. So, that, that's really easy, as well as it improves the lighting to the children when they're, when they're in the classroom, reading, uh, in their libraries, and when they're walking hallways. That in a nutshell is what we do, and what, uh, the opportunity is here from the district, and what I offer up tonight is, uh, not asking for any money or not asking for any contracts, but asking for the opportunity to possibly do some free work. Uh, and what I could do is I could, uh, if, with the blessing of the board, reach out to Ms. Rogers, and come back to the board of trustees, uh, perhaps at one of your next meetings, uh, I could just get a little information per your annual utility bills and your square footage, and we can get, uh, pretty quickly with our engineers, a dollar per square foot spend, where you guys are, uh, when it comes to your utilities and how energy efficient you are, and that'll give us a good idea of what the opportunity looks like, whether that's, you know, two hundred thousand dollars a year in savings, or four hundred thousand dollars a year in savings, I don't know which else, uh, numbers are just yet. But, uh, I, we could turn that around pretty quickly, and I could come back to the board with some information, if that could be helpful, um, to, to you all.
Madam President, if you don't mind, just real quick, um, this, if you recall back, when we had one of our planning sessions, um, Jan, not January, but the one for, um, Mr. Watkins had reached out to me about talking about some of these different federal dollars. And I'd asked for him to be able to be a part of, like, helping us, the board, understand, and I think I talked with you about Mr. Watkins and different things. And the reason I bring this up is because I'm always transparent about every way that I do things, whether I'm sitting in that seat or this seat, or out in the crowd there. The whole point is that, as we continue to go forward and, and really drill down as to all aspects of how we're gonna understand federal dollars and different things, it never hurts, and this is what I've always felt, for us to have a lot of different people explaining a lot of different things, and see if the facts match up, or if there's any filtering to what the information that we've always received.
Okay.
And so, that's exactly why, you know, I think I'd asked about Mr. Watkins being able to be on the agenda, and for whatever reason, you know, he was not, and I said, ask him if he can come present here, because the fact is that this is something that I think we need to have a clear understanding, especially in light of what we heard from Dr. Labatt's staff tonight regarding roofs and everything else, to ensure that we're getting full details about how the money can be spent in all aspects of what we can do to maximize every single dollar, with respect to, um, with respect to us and, and providing for the school district, so.
To piggyback up on that, Ms. Cox, unfortunately, MDE has already come out and said that Essa Funds can't be used for roof improvements. Some other departments of education in other states have said differently. We're gonna try to work with them and see if a part of these federal funds that the district will be receiving, if that can be in allowable use. But if not, the services that we provide can help pre, for free up funds, right? You have this utility bill that you spend every year, right, it's going up about two or three percent because of the cost of living. Uh, let's help lower that, leverage those savings over time to help pay for some of the deferred maintenance that you guys may or may not have to, you know, bandwidth to do this year or in the coming coming years, so.
Okay, so basically, which?
Respectfully, uh, probably, I, I appreciate you coming in, I just wanted to say, from the board's perspective, when we got some of the guidance from Essa, we want to make sure that we're fair, I know this is a person, Mr. Spears, knows, but we didn't want to have any kind of bias, and so him coming into open forum is probably a fair process, and us giving the opportunity since we, we would have to have that open bid process, and we want to be fair. And so, the way we look at it from a district perspective, when vendors are sent to us, we don't want to see bias, we don't want to say because Mr. Spears recommended them, or even Ms. John recommended them, so we try to make it a fair process, and I think that's the best way to be for, we realize that they're a legitimate company, but we are prioritizing, prioritizing our, our capital improvement needs and our learning loss first as a priority, and we didn't want to start looking at any other, uh, uh, cost-saving initiatives similar to this one, and so we prioritize those things first. So, from a district's perspective, our perspective, we just wanted to say that Dr. Deo, I, and Holly and our team have looked at this extensively, and we just have to prioritize the needs of the district.
Okay, oh, board members, have any other comments?
No, I don't, I, if I recall, we did have an assessment on the LED lighting before.
Yes, that was, uh, Mr. Gill, um, he looked at this assessment, you know, we think that is, is something that's good long-term, but right now, we're prioritizing our current needs, the capital improvement plan, the parking lot, moving those, those savings from what we're, we're doing from the local funds, from, uh, with Essa and, uh, the other funds, so right now, we're just prioritizing what's on that capital improvement plan, and we're gonna work out, and as we get more information, as you guys do your retreat, we'll inform you about the cost savings and before with the things we have on our priority list.
One more, one more, uh, point of order, that, I think maybe some of, several of you have heard of our company before, who actually confirmed that changed all the city's lights to LED, uh, last summer. So, our name, that sounds familiar, uh, for four to six months, we were able to save the city almost four thousand dollars a year through LED lights, just a, a great example of kind of a new technology that's happened.
Okay, um, at this time, um, I'm, I'm, I'm reminded of the statement that the district is unveiling, and I'm going to read it, uh, for our information purposes, "In order to avoid any form of perception of improper, improper, the proprieties related to federal procurement laws, the Columbus Municipal School District asks that our vendors," and that would include you, sir, "who is interested in receiving federal funds for products or services to leave your brochure and your business card. Should the district decide to use any products or services related to this offer, we will distribute a copy of this to you at the appropriate time." Excuse me, "The Columbus Municipal School District will make all purchasing decisions following the guidance provided by Mississippi Code thirty-one seven thirteen, and all other statutes pertaining to federal procurement solicitation and conflicts of interest. In order for us to do this, uh, properly and respectfully, uh, what we will do at this time is to, uh, take your information as, uh, we've requested, and then the district will be getting back in touch with you."
Thank you so much for all of your time tonight, I really appreciate it. Any other questions for you?
Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you, Mr..
And I really appreciate it, and I will take time to read everything that you gave us.
Yes, thank you much.
Thanks for being patient.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you coming, so. Now, right now, we're moving down to, uh, item six, offer of superintendent, school operations, superintendent travel, travel reports and travel reviews, Dr. Labatt.
As I do every year, um, in my career, the last eight years, I did visit the capital to talk to the, uh, the Triangle delegation about learning loss and other issues, uh, an SCL, deal that died in Senate, and will make some time to try to, um, talk about those issues more sensitively with them as we start to deal with some of the issues related to learning loss and which we'll should need to buy for students. And I, I, and I did want to tell the board that I was doing that basically with also, so I've been going to the capital for a long time, just making sure that we stay ahead of the educational issues and meeting the needs of my current students.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move to, uh, superintendent recommendations, consideration for approval, student transfers. Board, if you've had a chance to look at the student transfer, I would need a motion for approval.
So, vote. Second.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion? Please, Little, Bob, for raising your right hand if you approve. It is approved, thank you. Number two, consideration and discussion to approve the agreement between Columbus Municipal School District and France Law Group. Uh, this is submitted by, uh, Dr. Labatt, you have any comments you'd like to make before we vote?
The guests of ours who've been on line since six o'clock, I'm gonna let you give you all a brief summary, so you can have some information. He said it's all, uh, the? Yeah, he's no fun. He's, he's, he's been on, he's been waiting since six. Sorry. And I know the board, I gave you guys a summary, but I want you all here, um, expert, and to give you all more detail before you make a misdecision.
We have, uh, read the agreement and everything, and you did explain it to us, um, during the review meeting, we, you talked about it. If you're not able to, uh, get him, we can just go on and move forward.
Okay, and just know that the agreement has been reviewed by the attorney.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And there's no expense from, uh, interesting contract unless we, we're in the math lawsuit, and so there's a financial obligation from the district to mitigate this whole entire situation, but my thought for the technology.
You know, Mr. Dunn, reading that contract, it mentioned something about they, was it something about they did all the work, and then the district later decided we didn't want to continue to pursue the lawsuit, that there was a breakup fee or something to that effect?
Yes, you, you know, big, if, if you get it right down, it's a twenty percent fee up to a certain point, when I say fee, contingent fee. First of all, if, 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 if they don't collect anything, you don't owe anything.
Right.
So, that's number one. Number two, it's either twenty percent of what's collected, or twenty-five percent. But, if they do all the work, and you get several years down the road, and you say, I don't want to settle, you know, we want to- You know, we want to pull out, then you will owe them for certain things. It's pretty clear.
Right.
That's not unusual in contingent fee arrangements. When we do contingent fee work, we've got to get our time out of it. You can't bail out for, you know, for no good reason later on. So, I, I can't imagine why you would want to bail out down the road. If, if they're successful and they collect, and you really have nothing to lose, it seems to me.
Okay, any other concerns? I need a, so at this time, I'm requesting a approval. For the France Law Group. Electronic cigarette and I said J U U L.
Juul.
Juul. You know, you know, I was glad I didn't know what that was.
Correct.
Really, for the Juul. At this time, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
It's been motioned by Mr. Sparks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, discussion? May I remind you why we're doing this?
Okay, so, the purpose of this is to get more funds to prevent it taking sensors in the bathroom. When we win the lawsuit, it is a serious problem in our school.
I know.
And so, Juuls and those electronics are not, are highly addicted. And they've been on storefronts for years, they've just recently taken them off. And so, the long-term impact will be similar to what your generation dealt with with the cigarette, the mass cigarette lawsuits. And getting those funds back in the school, they have preventative measures, so students will not use these products. And that we would have detectors because they are very hard to detect. A kid who smokes a Juul all day long at school is highly addicted, and we would never, also have detectors. So, these funds will be used to help prevent and deal with students with addiction. And put those kind of mechanisms within.
Now, is this, is this a class action?
It's a mass action.
Mass action, okay.
Mass, mass is different. So, each individual school, he'll look at our needs, some of our discipline, some of what's happening in the region with advertisement. And fortunately, we'll get a specific amount. So, mass is, I'll bring that up from him, it's a mass, so each individual. So, it's not everybody gets the same thing in the bottom.
You're welcome, yes, sir.
Oh, just one other thing. Because it may be, I mean, a lot of these lawsuits, classroom mass action could take five, seven years, whatever. And we've got students who may be participating in using these students now, I mean, using these products now. So, I mean, is there some thought about you going ahead? I mean, how much of the detectors to begin with, that we, I mean, if we're working to safeguard our students. Should we not be looking into having these sensors already in those buildings as part of our capital improvement program? If it's identified, you know, student safety, then going ahead instead of waiting five or ten years down the road. The settlement comes in and actually getting those detectors already. And then, when the money, if the money comes in, then we can reimburse ourselves or the district.
Sir, I'm not even aware of the cost or the devices of, of, of how much this would cost. I can give you that information, but I feel that if we get into lawsuits more information, I can bring some information back to the board about that. And these detectors and feedback. But he, he is the expert, he can be, he will be able to give you this information. I didn't even know these kind of detectors existed before, given to this illegal room, so.
Any additional discussion? All in agreement for approval, will you please raise your right hand? It is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item three, consideration and a discussion to approve superintendent to attend the model school conference. I believe that's June twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, and it's in Nashville. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Spears and second by Dr. Schumay. Any discussion? No discussion, please approve by raising your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Number four, this consideration and discussion to approve CMSD personnel to attend the model school conference. June twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, need a motion for approval?
So moved.
Been motioned by Mr. Spears, we need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks, discussion? No discussion, all in approval, please, please, consider if I raise your right hand, please. It is unanimous. At number five, consideration and a discussion to approve CMSD personnel to attend the National Association. Conference in Chicago, July seventh through the tenth, I need a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Spears has made the motion, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion? No discussion, if you're all in approval, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item six, consideration to discuss. Consideration and a discussion to approve staff personnel items presented by Mr. Hanley. We need a motion to approve. Has been motioned by Ms. Mrs. Young, second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion?
Yes, I have a question here.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that we have a lot of teachers that are leaving for personal reasons. And I would like to know where we are with our exit interviews for employees that leave the district.
Mr. Hanley?
Hey, boy.
Good evening, how are you?
How are you, I have a question. The, I guess, has been administered to employees, and we are collecting responses from the electronic. My plan was actually to give you all a report, I'd like to speak to you all next month. And as far as the, the personal answers that we gather, or personal response we have on the report. That's based on the information we got from the employees. So, but I'll give you all a more detailed report when we meet next month, that will outline the recruitment along with the feedback from the employees, sir.
I have a question.
All right.
Is, is personal, when you say it's information you got from the employees, is it like a check off? They have three options of why they're leaving, or what does that mean?
Well, we have like the option for personal reasons, and then there's also a chance for them to elaborate more. And so, like, that's what I'm saying, I'd answer like, what their more specifics and that'd be well, I'll give you.
And what percentage, oh, you haven't had a chance to look at it? Oh, okay.
And I'm just asking if you run it through the legal department, because you don't want them all.
No, I'm just asking for trends, I don't care, you know, I mean, it doesn't matter to me who the person is, but if there's a trend, that would be good to know.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Hanley. Okay, since there is no other discussions, we need approval for the personnel items. Staff and personnel items. All in favor, will you please raise your right hand? Okay, we have four. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had checked out motion.
We did.
I did?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I thought I had motion and a second, and then discussion.
Okay, I apologize.
And who made the second, I see, Ms. Young.
I'm turning my head.
Young and Sparks.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, I'm checking it off, thank you very much for your insight, I appreciate it. I'll go over that again, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, all not in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, the motion is passed and four one. Thank you, Dr. Schumay. Number seven, consideration and a discussion to approve lease agreements between CMSD and Rent-a-Space. I believe that's something that we've used. Dr. D O, do you have any additional comments on this item?
Rent-a-Space, we actually, uh, we use it to contain the, 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 uh, when we pay assets. But we still have that, 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 what do you call it, an act.
I need a motion to approve the lease agreement.
So moved.
Been motioned by Mr. Sparks, we need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion?
Yeah, good question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming this is, I shouldn't assume, is this in climate controlled, or is it, it's climate controlled? And has anybody been over, I mean, do you have a system for people going over, just sort of look around and check?
Do the check.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. With the questions being made, if you're all in approval, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Item number eight, consideration and a discussion to approve the request to advertise child fine publicity campaign. Mrs. Alonier, do you have any comments that you might like to make on this item? Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you very much, thank you for being here through this long meeting. I need a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, please solidify approval by raising your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Number nine, consideration and a discussion to approve request to seek insurance bids for FY twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. It's been motioned by Mr. Spears, we need a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Young, questions? No discussion, please solidify approval by raising your right hand. It is approved. Number ten, consideration and a discussion to approve recommendation, recommended athletic director's salary schedule. We need a motion for approval? Um, been motioned by Mrs. Young, second? Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Sparks, discussion?
I guess, um, this, this current schedule. Are there any changes from the previous schedule? If so, what were the changes to compare?
Uh, my apology, Miss, Miss Holly had to leave at Berkeley, she had a family emergency. But when we looked at the salary schedule for the athletic department, prior to me coming on board. We had a, a employee that was an athletic director that was not a certified administrator. And so, the assistant superintendent was an emsis, but we had, uh, uh, the person was non-certified. So, he had four athletic supervisors. And some of those people weren't certified, but helped them with supervision. You have to be a certified administrator to be an athletic director. So, we called that in our meeting, it was piecemeal, right? A bunch of people to do one, one role, okay? The second part was, when I arrived, we had a difficult time recruiting assistant principals. Because we were probably twelve to thirteen thousand dollars below anybody in the region for assistant principals. So, if you remember this board, thankfully, approved assistant principals' salary scale last February, okay? And before then, we were recruiting to get, you know, more assistant principals at the high school. And the people, a person would take the job and then not come because the salary was so low. And so, we had the, at the AD at that time to assist with the duties, which we came up with despite, remember that? So, this is all piecemeal, yeah. And so, that person was an assistant principal and athletic director because we could not find enough assistant principals. Now that we, once we moved the salary, we've been able to recruit more assistant principals. So, now, we really feel with the guidance of the board, we want somebody totally devoted to athletics. We looked at job descriptions and asked for the assistance in Starkville. We really want to have somebody that's committed to building our elementary program. And if you look at the job description, there's not many jobs that a person comes in at eight o'clock in the morning. And most nights of the week, they'll go to bed at ten o'clock. My dad was athletic director, and we talked extensively that you give up your family. And my dad lost his being athletic director, because he was just gone all the time. And so, it is an extensive job, is a ten to fifteen dollar hour job, an hour a day job, from morning to evening. And I think this is a minimal of what we can pay somebody that, that does this kind of work. And with the expectations we have of what, what's going to happen. So, it is, is a very important role. We talked extensively how we want to improve athletic programs in our district. And we want it to be a position and not piecemealed like we've done before. So, I hope I've explained that.
I guess, yeah, you did, and I appreciate that. My next question is, is the salary comparable to those of districts our size, always still playing catch up?
You know, I think when people are away from their family, fifteen hours a day, it's not about what you give them. And it is a huge sacrifice. I would say that for any coach, or anybody that does anything outside of their normal teaching hours, because it is extensive. But I'm so glad that we worked with, and we had a very good committee that thought about things like that, about people's family being gone that amount of time. But an athletic director is one of few people, our principals work hard, and our teachers work hard. But they get there at eight o'clock in the morning, and most days, they're not going to be home until ten-thirty. Especially in, in, in any given time. So, it is a, it is a tough, tough job, and it's something you have to love to do. And we want to be able to, you know, provide some assistance, you know, as far as, you know, helping that person out. But, you know, I would say that, you know, we can always do better, because it is a huge sacrifice, not only to that person's family. And I'm so glad I was brought on, we were able to talk about heart over head leadership, and us being mindful of people's family and the work that they do when they commit themselves as educators. Whether it's an athletic director or, or principal, so that's just, it's just very important. So, I would say that we are fair, but we are not comparable. And it is, you know, something we'll look at again, but it is a lot of work. I hope I answered everybody's question.
Any other discussion? Comments? So, we can say that this is comparable, we're a level five school, so it's comparable with other level five schools.
I think it's fair, you should say. Fair.
It's a fair.
Fair.
Yes, it is. It's fair compared to other districts in Mississippi that are level four and level five school districts. Because the numbers just vary slightly from level four to level five. All right, we do have a motion, and we have a second, discussions have taken place. If all in approval of the athletic director's salary schedule, please show a raise of hand if you approve. It is unanimous. Number eleven.
Thank you, boy.
You're welcome. Number eleven, consideration and a discussion revised teacher and assistant teacher's salary schedule. We've had an opportunity to look at this, if you've, if we've had any questions, I need a motion for approval, please? All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I see it wasn't up for approval, so excuse me. Is it?
Yes.
Or discussion, it's not said for, it didn't say for it to be approved, if that's right, for consideration?
Yes, ma'am. My apologies.
Okay. Number seven, Office of the Business Management, Columbus Municipal.
Oh, Miss, Miss, did y'all approve the salary scale with you?
No.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, Ms. Witter was trying to say she forgot to put that word in.
Oh, all right then, I understand.
I'm sorry.
No, I apologize, I apologize, Ms. Witter. No, I apologize. I apologize, Ms. Woodard, Ms. Woodard. If, um, all right, so we need a, uh, motion for approval.
We have a motion. I'm like, Young and Sparks, right?
We good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Discussions have been made.
Wait, no, 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 I have a question.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, um, just on the teacher aid, the step increases. Um, I'm a little confused. They start off at, from step one to step eight, it's a twenty-five dollar increase. And then at step nine, it jumps to four hundred and fifty dollars. Step ten is four hundred and eighty, but then on step eleven, it drops down to four hundred and seventy. And then on step twelve, it jumps up to four hundred and ninety and thirteen drops down to four seventy. Um, fourteen goes back up to four ninety and then fifteen drops down to four seventy-five.
This is Ms. Rogers' head step out, but I can tell you from the others' salary scales we reviewed within the district, this sent, oh, sir.
First, first of all, this, uh, schedule was based on the, the teacher pay raise and the confines of what we had in our current schedule. Like many of the other salary schedule, um, Ms. Rogers has not been able to find the pattern, like there's no pattern. But to remedy it is a whole nother task. I remember just Sparks asking a question about a specific salary scale and same kind of inconsistency. So to remedy that is very difficult. So, uh, that has been the salary scale that we proved that we've had and we've moved in the, the current raise from the state into our current salary scale. And I know you've seen some, just the fluctuation between years, but that was established, you know, way before my arrival, before Ms. Rogers. And, uh, several of our salary scales aren't like this. And there is no rational explanation. It may have been at that time, we can't see the pattern of why it was made in the way it was made. And like I said, the difficult part is fixing that. You know what I mean? How to constitute, put money in, that you're not taking away from people. And then sometimes fix is so expensive to start everybody all over, start with this particular scale. So only thing I can say is I apologize. And I will get Ms. Rogers to look into it and, um, um, if, and if you can just send us, uh, I'll send her an email about you and this, the questions between the scale. We've found that, that pattern in several of the salary schedules in the district.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm saying, yes, go with it, but, um, just trust that we've seen the same issues and had the same concerns.
If y'all are working on it, it's, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions, discussion? All in favor, will you please raise your right hand? Approval. It is unanimous. Motion pending. Thank you. And now we'll move to the, um, office of business management. Ms. Rogers isn't. She had to leave. So, uh, we'll look at a consideration to approve, uh, the finances. And I look at, uh, items one through six, monthly financial statements reports, which is the fund balance report, cash balance report, budget status report, monthly revenue budget report, monthly expenditure to a budget report, and, uh, certification and summary of reconciled bank statements. Are there any, um, we need a, uh, motion for approval for these reports, please? Been motioned by Mr. Spears. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Any questions, discussion? We all in approval, will you please raise your right hand? It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving to, um, item one through seven, add below in tax collection analysis report. Are there any, uh, comments for discussion? Any discussion?
Just, um, just one, um, just to follow up on, um, I apologize, trying to follow up. We had requested, and I know Ms. Rogers is not here, um, to get an idea of now that the tax assessor is collecting back taxes and putting it in with our current year collections. Because to understand whether or not we are obviously trending behind or if just basically that we would know how much more money we're getting for those back taxes that aren't under the current levy that's now in these checks that are received, um, was, is just really my only, um, only question. But I know that's something that maybe Dr. LaBott could look in and since it was.
Ms. Rogers?
Yeah, yes, I'll definitely get that information. She's texting me, she's in a serious family situation, so.
No, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm having a big night. I was just saying, just that was my only question.
So back taxes, I'll, I'll get her address and send you all an email.
And I, uh, and the email, or during the retreat with every fine, then she could bring something to us when she presents it. Item one point eight, fund balance trends, bank cash balance yearly comparisons, athletic reports. Moving right on. We're at, uh, item one point eleven, consideration and our discussion to approve the budget amendment. I need a motion for approval. Been motioned by Mrs. Young. We need a second.
So.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Discussion? No discussion? If you're all in agreement, would you please raise your right hand to solidify approval? Okay, all opposed? We have four approvals, one disapproved. Moving on to item one point twelve, consideration and a discussion to approve fixed assets disposals. We need a motion for approval. Been motioned by Mr. Spears. We need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? With no discussion, will you please solidify by raising your right hand approval, please? It is unanimous. Thank you. Claim dockets. We're moving on down line. You out slowly, we'll show it. Uh, we need a motion to approve the claim dockets. The motion by Mrs. Young, we need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears. Discussion? No discussion? Please solidify your approval by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Federal programs and IDEA monthly financial review. For discussion, do you have any questions concerning the financial review? This is a report that we review every month and we've been looking at it for about a year or so now, a couple of years, really. Moving right along to consent, to our consent agenda. Please bear with me, I'm being a little hoarse right now. Monthly policy review update for policy BD, policy BDB, and policy BDE. Number one, consideration and approve the revised slash new policies during April, during our April twelfth meeting, our regular board meeting. Uh, from the office of business management, the, uh, current and recommended policy, the hazardous policy EM, hazardous materials asbestos hazard emergency act fifteen, personnel, the new personnel GB, G A A B handbook, new policy BG Ben, possession of weapons on school premises, current recommended policies, policy GAA, professional educators code of conduct, and policy GAAH, community and parent relations. I need a motion for approval for these policies, please.
So.
Been motioned by, uh, Mrs. Young. Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? I'm sorry, any discussion? With no discussion, would you, uh, please raise your right hand for approval? It is unanimous. Thank you. Dates to remember is for discussion. We have, uh, academics. The Columbus Municipal School District's annual job fair, which is coming up. That's great news. It will be April fifteenth, no, I'm sorry, April fourteenth through the fifteenth, from three to five, here at Brandon Central Office. Thank you, Mr. Young. The, uh, April fifteenth progress reports. We have the athletic activities. And, uh, with the schedule, I'm hoping that some of us will be able to attend some of, uh, the fast pitch, the baseball track, powerlifting, at least any of them that we can. I see where the Columbus High School band has a band spring concert recording. That's interesting. It's to be announced. The time is, but it's April fourteenth, so that's this week. And then we have a, the band over there in Idubina Community College on the sixteenth. We have several things that our, our children are really participating in and that's very fortunate. The other item is, uh, our board meetings, board of trustees review meeting, which will be on Microsoft Teams at eleven thirty, at eleven thirty on May fifth. Then we have the board retreat, uh, which is on May eighth at eight thirty for the board members. And, uh, I believe Dr. LaBott will be in attendance also this time. And, uh, one of the items here on the board meetings board, I, I need your comments uh, to reschedule the May tenth time for our regular board trustees meeting, uh, to change from six o'clock PM to eight thirty that morning. Would any of the board members be, would that be a conflict for you that time? That's changing the board's regular meeting from, on May tenth, from six o'clock until eight thirty.
So that's six PM to eight thirty AM.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes. Not eight thirty at night, please. Eight thirty AM, yes. Okay, is that good with everyone? Works for Ms. Young, Mr. Sparks? It works for Mr. Sparks, Dr. Schumacher? It works for me too. Mr. Spears?
Yes, ma'am.
All right then. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. Now I need a motion for us to go into closed determination for, excuse me.
We'd have to vote to change that.
God, it's the agenda.
We have to vote to change that time.
Yeah, excuse me. All right, we did, um, the motion, we did approve the consent agenda. We didn't? But the complete agenda, okay.
Could, yeah, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
There was a, a motion by Young and a second by Sparks and a five oh vote, but that was not the consent agenda. Was that just those?
Policies under the consent is what I understood.
Which?
It was a complete consent agenda.
So.
Okay, for those policies only?
So what, which policies were they? I just want to make sure I've got my.
Uh, what I, what I gather is, was, and I'm sorry, Madam President, but was the eight and twelve, the ones at the top there, that goes eight, one, all the way through, one point two two, two policies. And then you got the dates to remember. So I mean, even if it's approved, the, the whole thing under the consent agenda, I mean, that could be a separate item, correct, for the date to be changed?
Sure, it could be done either way, really.
Pardon?
Well, not date, I'm sorry, time.
Yeah, it's not the date, it's the time being changed?
That's right.
So with the time being changed, uh, let me, uh, get this straight for my own clarity. Uh, on the consent agenda, the dates, the athletic dates and all of that have to be approved? That's what I was thinking. I'm trying to get clarification.
We've just always, we've just always done it that way, just one fell swoop. Approved the consent agenda.
She said you've always done it that way?
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me give you a little context about the labor at the point.
Okay.
It's because for so long, before the current superintendent, before most of this board, it was just like you find out if things happening in the school district after the fact. So, the board said, well, let's just put the dates on there so that when you come here and you see them on the consent agenda, you know, hey, you can't come back and say, I didn't know that they were gonna have a football game or something. And, and that's why they're on here so that the board can see, here are the dates for those upcoming events. And it just got put under the consent agenda because it's not something you really have to approve. They've already been approved by, you know, the Mississippi High School Association or the school district's AD department or whatever it is at the superintendent's office. And we're just kind of affirming that, yeah, we saw that we're gonna have a baseball game at this time or whatever, more than we are approving the actual event itself.
That's why I separated, uh, starting with the, uh, the dates to remember. That was the reason why I did it separate, just for discussion only? Oh, okay. Okay. All right, uh, so we will move to the item under the board meeting. And, uh, I need a motion to change our, uh, board of trustees regular meeting from the six o'clock PM on May tenth to eight thirty AM on May tenth.
So.
All right, it has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. We need a second. Second by Mr. Spears. We've had discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you all very much for the clarity. Uh, now we move to closed determination for executive session, policy BCBK. I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
So.
It's been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Okay, we are in executive sessions.